Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the January 30th, 2024 meeting of the Dover School Committee, Sherburne School Committee, and the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee meeting collectively referred to as a Joint School Committee meeting. My name is Demis Kwant, and I call this meeting to order at 6:33 PM. I'm pleased to hold this open meeting at the Dover Sherburne Middle School, and we're also live streaming this on Dover Sherburne TV. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. I'd like to remind all committee members and the public that we adopted our operating norms back in September to provide a general set of norms that we should hold ourselves to in all matters that come before our three committees. The first item on our agenda are community comments. Before we kind of get started, I just wanted to poll to see, are there any community comments? Yes? Okay, great. So let me just go over a couple of sort of norms that we have adopted for this meeting, and then we can hop into those comments. Next on our agenda is community comments. We've provided a Zoom link, and there's a number of folks that are on for folks to make comment who it's not possible to attend in person. Please remember that community comments are an opportunity for members of the school committee to listen to members of the community. As chair of this meeting, it's my responsibility to facilitate this communication between the public and the three committees present this evening. I personally believe this communication is a critical element to assist members of these committees with discharging the responsibility of the positions they've been elected to hold. To effectively facilitate this discussion, I encourage anyone providing comment to consider that the volunteers that comprise these committees are your neighbors, friends, and fellow community members. We welcome all points of view, but would respectfully ask that you treat these committee members in a manner consistent with that in mind. Collectively, we're here to support the administration, who in turn assist our educators and support our staff to educate, care for, invest in, and inspire our children. We respectfully request that you keep the comments brief, no more than three minutes, and that you move the discussion forward by adding new information. Please try to avoid repeating points that have already been made. Once the public comment section of this meeting is concluded, we'll move on to other business, and unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. This is standard operating procedure in school committee meetings across our three districts. If you desire more information or have specific questions, contact information for committee members is on the district website. So with that, we'll take community comments in person, person, and then we'll move over to those folks that are on.
You've never been here, do I understand about the topic?
Do you stand up, state your name and your address?
Okay. Thank you for giving the opportunity to speak. My name is Bradley Mitchell. I live at Two Ledgewith Road in Dover. I'm here on behalf of my wife Stephanie and my kids. We are an amazing group. Our oldest is a second grader at Chikering, and our two youngest ones will be going there over the next couple of years. So we have many, many years in the DS system in progress. I'm here to make a quick statement regarding the school calendar. We live in a very diverse community with people of many religious faiths, including Catholics, Eastern Orthodox, Protestants, Jews, Muslims, and Hindus, as well as many, many atheists and agnostics. In our opinion, the school calendar is biased in favor of Catholics, Protestants, and Jewish people with two Jewish holidays and two Western Christian holidays. As church-going Episcopalians, the current school calendar benefits me and my family. That said, we do not expect a public school to follow our church calendar or reflect our private religious beliefs. While schools should teach students about different religious traditions and permit students time off to participate in important religious activities, we do not believe it is the role of a public school to celebrate religious traditions of any group, and it is especially not the role of a public school to celebrate only certain favorite religious traditions as it currently does. While the proposal that had additional holidays attempt to recognize the diversity of the DS community, the fundamental problem cannot be solved by favoring new and different groups, in this case Muslims and Hindus, over Eastern Orthodox, or atheists, or all the other smaller religious groups such as Sikhs, without the power and numbers to move the school committee to action. The committees have a timely opportunity to treat all families equally regardless of cultural background or creed by removing all religious holidays from the school calendar. We hope that they seize, the youth seize this opportunity, and remove all federally, non-federally mandated holidays from the DS school calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody else? I'd ask if you either raise your hand if you're on video or use the hand raise feature within Zoom, and we can just take it sort of one by one. I see Gail Murphy. If you wouldn't mind coming off mute and stating your name and your address, please, and then your comment. We can't, we can't hear you. Still unmute.
Unmute her, go ask him.
Can you hear me now?
There we are.
Do you have me?
Yep.
Yes. Oh, because I can't hear you at all. Okay. So I'm sorry, can you give me a thumbs up if you can hear me? God, thank you. Gail Murphy, One Town Line Road, Sherburne. I'm a former Sherburne School Committee Chair, President of Positive, and President of FOFO. I've watched many school committee meetings. I spoke before this committee last year. And today I'm back, still concerned that district initiatives do not address basic academic requirements that parents and taxpayers expect from our schools. Portrait of a Graduate, Challenge Success, and DEI Implementation and Application are championed as the foundation of the curriculum, as well as the student and teacher experience at DS. However, none of these programs prioritize academic achievement or merit. During the 9/12/2023 Joint School Committee meeting, Superintendent Beth McCoy listed nine best practices that are quote, "living in our classrooms," end quote, outlined by teachers across the district. The list includes relationships, voice, agency, relevance, equitable access, critical thinking, collaboration, individualization, and growth. Again, merit and academic achievement are not on the list. In the same meeting, Beth McCoy stated, quote, "DEI goals are baked into the district's strategic plans," end quote. Seemingly unable or unwilling to define what that means, what happened to the promised transparency around all things DEI? We all need to know how the curriculum, teaching methods, and teaching materials have changed due to DEI implementation. We are now seeing many universities and corporations getting rid of their DEI policies. These policies have led to poor outcomes, as we have seen at Harvard, United Airlines. And in a January 23rd letter to Cornell University, John Linsley, counselor to the university president, calls to quote, "abandon its misguided commitment to DEI because it has yielded not excellence, but disgrace," end quote. Since DS is still embracing these policies, climate sense says there are proven results to back up this plan. Unfortunately, this is not the case. For example, Pine Hill School ranked 173rd among Massachusetts Elementary Schools in a ranking by U.S. News &amp; World Report with only 62% of students at or above the math proficiency level and 67% at or above the reading proficiency level. Chikering fared a bit better, ranking at number 40 with 78% math proficiency and 75% reading proficiency. These numbers are frankly abysmal, especially since these towns pride themselves in providing a top-tier education. It is your job as school committee members to challenge and ask questions of this administration. Do you all support everything this administration proposes? Where is the healthy debate? Look honestly at yourselves and at the performance results. It is time for a change. The students deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail.
Are we timing these?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Gail, can you hear us just to do a volume check?
By ten, yes.
Great, appreciate it. I see Alexandra Frank. I see your hand up.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Can you state your name and address, please?
I'm going to, thank you. Good evening, I'm Alexandra Frank. My husband and I moved to Sherburne a year and a half ago to send our two daughters to what we thought were the town's reputable and high-ranking school system. Shortly after enrolling them in Pine Hill Elementary School in the fall of 2022, I learned a disturbing reality that the academic formation of students is not the priority in the school system. What has replaced classroom time for the basics such as reading, writing, and arithmetic has been an agenda to indoctrinate children for trendy social causes and beliefs. In educational terms, the new program is called Social Emotional Learning, involving culturally responsive teaching, much of this programming adopted by government agencies, corporations, universities, and other institutions under the guise of diversity, equity, and inclusion. These new teachings require and have overtaken hours of educational time. The result has been a decline in the number of hours spent on teaching the academics and drops in school rankings. Not being one to stand by silently when I see a problem, I voiced my concerns multiple times to the administration. Many hours were spent emailing administrators, attending and reviewing school committee meetings, familiarizing myself with the terminology, researching, and attending all information sessions made available to parents. I quickly learned that the administration and the school committee are not interested in hearing my objections. What became apparent is parents are considered interference to the new agenda. Parents who should be respected as the primary educators of their children have been sent a message they have no rights in the DS school system. Over a several-month period, other parents joined me and courageously voiced their concerns. I say courageous because many other parents will only speak privately about these same concerns because you have not been welcoming and have even bullied them. They are afraid to speak up. They are afraid of retribution, and they are afraid of running for school committee, even though they know this is where they could make much-needed change. I'll close by saying I will continue to speak up even though we have taken our daughters out of the town school and enrolled them in a private school where they learned more academics in a few weeks this fall than they learned all of last year at Pine Hill. I will continue to speak up because I know I'm representing many parents and other residents of the community. I will continue until the school committee, administration, DESI, and teacher unions make the changes needed to get the school back on track to educational excellence instead of focusing on agendas that steal from a real academic education. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexandra. Is there anybody else? If you do have any comments, please use the hand raise or come on to video so we can see you, please. All right. Anybody else here? Nope. All right, that closes our community comments. Thank you, everybody, for sharing those points. We have a quorum now for regional schools. Awesome, cool. Next up are superintendent comments from Beth.
Great. Good evening, everyone. I have a few quick updates, and then we can launch into progress on my goals, which will cover lots of other updates as well. There's updates tonight, too, from Denny, from Kate, and from Dawn, who are part of my team and certainly would not, the work that we all do is relying on each other. So thank you for all that you provide to the committees this evening. Thank you to those of you who attended the State of the Union last Wednesday. Denny and I were here presenting our strategic plan. We started with our core values and our foundational programming here as a district, and then launched into current data and demographics of our students, went through all five buckets of the strategic plan, talking about what we're currently doing relative to all those initiatives and what is coming next. So we are going to be sending that out this week. We just got it from DSC TV, the recording, so we'll make sure it's available to everybody in multiple places so people can watch as they like. Just a reminder of upcoming events. This coming Sunday is the Chocolate Cafe at 1:30. So if you like chocolate and you like music or you like one or the other, it's a great place to be. So please consider thinking about that. As part of our transparency, on February 8th at 6:30 here, our principals and assistant principals and our guidance team will be talking about restorative practices and what we've learned through our work with Suffolk University and Metco and what that's starting to look like inside of our school buildings. And then again, March 7th, we have the Industry Panel, where we'll have parents and community members doing similar to what we did in 2019, where we talk about kind of the future of work and how people got to where they are and how they see our students needing to gain skills in certain different areas than we did, and how perhaps AI is going to play into that so our students and parents can get insight into different fields and their futures. And then March 27th, I just got great news from Ellen Shagnan Rowley in the Guidance Department that they have a full college panel ready to present, similarly that we did to 2019, about how do we get our students to stand up from the pack as they apply to the colleges that are the best fit for them? So lots of great things coming up, so we'll hope that you'll join us. In terms of goals, I provided a document for you. I'm not going to read it to you. I'm hopeful that you recognize a lot of the things that were already listed in here because I try to touch on them throughout our meetings. So I will just mention the nine best practices that we have that we're working on as a district, and you'll see the through line between the nine best practices that the district identified influencing the leadership goals, influencing the teachers' goals, and then obviously the observation and the feedback that the evaluators give to teachers in the classroom. We feel that these are best teaching practices to teach content, rigorous content, so that students can achieve at high levels. Couple other updates. Denny's going to talk about the November professional development, and that's certainly something that is important to our work in moving forward with academics. The curriculum audit continues. So if you remember the puzzle from last year, we had a whole webinar on the puzzle and all of the pieces that go into the curriculum that we want our students to be able to access. So this is the how we teach, and this is the what we teach in order for students to achieve at high levels. So the audit continues this year. Teachers continue to use this tool and look at their various units for these components, hopefully internalizing these areas so that as they continue to design lessons and units, they'll have these in mind. Student sense of belonging. As you know, we're continuing to pilot Fly5 at the elementary level. We have lots of great leadership opportunities for our students across all four buildings, and we're starting to see the benefits of those as students, more and more students are serving as upstanders to their peers, being a positive influence in their school communities. So that's exciting. And then Metco 2.0. You watched the video at one of your former meetings. Denny, Monique Marshall-Deale. This is a good quiz for me. Jen Ryan, Jen Meek, and Tori Stolzer are part of our district-wide team that is working with Metco 2.0 to look at their blueprint for what a Metco district should look like and how we can support all students to gain from the experience and how we can, as a district, coincide with that. And luckily, a lot of the work that we're already doing coincides, so there's just some tweaking to be done. Transparent communication. You know about our new website. We continue to update it. We've talked about the newsletters from the four schools and myself trying to streamline so that they have similar components and certainly touch on the teaching and learning that's happening every day. Communication hub and office hours you're already aware of. Parent groups as well. See, the district already talked about. I mentioned the workshops. And I think probably the two exciting things that we haven't really talked much about is we've been working with a communication specialist. I attended two of his workshops at the MASSC conference, learning about how to keep the strategic plan at the forefront of all that we do and then how to communicate on polarizing topics. We brought him here to the district. He did a presentation here with our leadership team talking about how to get our messaging out about the positive things that we're doing with kids and how to get it to all constituents in bite-sized pieces that they'll actually look at, read, and absorb. So more progress there, and certainly communication is always something that we'll be working on. And lastly, for those of you who haven't heard, Parent Square, check it out when you get home because instead of getting 30 emails and two text messages, and then you can't find the email and you can't find the permission slip, you're going to have an app on your phone, and all of the school communication is going to come through that single app. And you'll be able to do multiple things, including sign permission slips and sign up to volunteer and buy tickets all in one place. Coming this summer, you'll have to enroll, but the IT department has already configured it, all the stuff behind the scenes, and we're going to be launching it with teachers this spring. So it's super exciting.
Across and across the district.
Check it out. Download it now. Vision for Teaching and Learning ties in. You'll see how the district goals and my goals specifically overlap as well as the communication. So the only other goal that's specifically mine is around measures of success. So we've talked about what teaching and learning should look like in the classroom, what the curriculum should look like. So what does success look like for our students? And so we are working with a company called Open Architects that creates dashboards. They already have an MCAS dashboard available to us that we're learning to use. It's pretty fantastic because it used to be that you had to go into the DESI security portal, remember your username, remember your password, draw up 30 different reports, and then literally it would just take us hours to go through and say, you know, which items do students do well on? Where do we need to improve? What about this subgroup? What about this class? What about this teacher? Now it like happens in seconds just through this dashboard. So we have the MCAS dashboard. They're designing an MTSS dashboard based on all the benchmarks that we use, DIBELS, Panorama, F&amp;P diagnostics. So our data teams and our teachers will be able to use that to look at individual students, track progress, classes, schools, et cetera. And then higher above that, we're going to have a district outward-facing platform that will measure progress on all of our initiatives so that we can keep ourselves honest and accountable to the work that we want to do. That's about it on my goals. Aside from that, I have the four pillars of the rubric that I continue to work on. I couldn't do it without Dawn, Kate, and Denny. I'm not going to update you today, but that's the work that I do every day in addition to, or the work we do every day in addition to all of the forward progress that we're trying to make at the same time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know the packages have been sent around to everybody a couple of days ago, so if there are any questions after reading that or Beth's update.
Just a quick one. For the communication specialist, we'll also be a component, you said constituents, will also involve like town members, even not directly. And do we know how we might be reaching those yet? Or would it be referring them to the website?
So a couple of things. We are working to kind of capture bite-sized stories and get them out, and whether that's through email or whether that's through paper flyers or whether that's through Hometown Weekly. We're starting to learn and realize that the same attention spans that our students are showing, so are the adults. And so how can we get lots of information in a short, concise manner? And the great thing about Parent Square is right now, unless you're a parent in the system, we can't email you unless your child is registered in the student information system. Parent Square, other people from the outside, so the community members can register, and then whatever is appropriate for them to get, such as my newsletters or Pine Hill newsletters that don't have, you know, confidential student information or pictures in them, they'll be able to get in their email or on their phone as well.
Thank you.
So there's a whole new layer there.
Does that replace Blooms?
Yes, yep. It's going to, it's actually exciting. Dawn's very excited because it's replacing Blooms financially, and it's replacing School Messenger, which is the clunky system that we use to cancel snow, to cancel days for snow or if there's a lockdown. So it's going to be all in one place with one password. It's going to be great, too.
And so the texting will also stop?
The texting can come through. So good point, and we're still learning. But my understanding, you have it as a parent, feel free to jump in, right? Yeah, don't you?
No, I don't.
Oh, I thought you did. You're just an expert anyways. No surprise. But so you can either configure it so just like you get alerts on your phone, the little numbers. Yes, you can get push notifications. It'll pop up. And then for people who don't like to use apps, you can say, I still want to get it in my email box. So you can pick and choose. Yeah, very exciting. And thank you, Dawn, for helping us reconfigure the finances to make that work.
Take something away.
That's it for my presentation. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take them. Otherwise, there's another superintendent that has an update for you.
Denny?
All right. So Assistant Superintendent update. So it's hard to believe that our November 27th PDA was so long ago. Stayed for Thanksgiving. When I took this job, Superintendent McCoy said, "You'll never enjoy your Thanksgiving break again." She was right.
I get to do mine, though.
It's such a wonderful day of learning having everybody in the district together on that day to learn, have this common experience. Our theme for our PDA this year was empowering students to take ownership of their learning. And the kind of big goal of the day was to give teachers the practical tools to meet our nine best practices. So not to put these nine best practices out there, but to actually give teachers the strategies that they could go into their classrooms the next day and use. So you can see a picture of our lovely superintendent delivering the introduction and the welcome for all the teachers. And we had such a wealth of information, and one of the goals that we have in the district around professional development is really personalize our professional development because one size doesn't fit all for our students, and it doesn't fit, one size doesn't fit all for our educators as well. So teachers had lots of different options during the day. The keynote was delivered by A.J. Giuliani, which you know the district worked with during the pandemic. He gave his keynote called Meaningful and Relevant: How to Engage Learners in an Age of Distraction, which really resonated with people because that is what we were looking at in an age where there is social media, technology, politics, everything going on in the world. So how do we really engage all of our students? And it's very hard sometimes to find a keynote that can speak to K through 12 educators, to classroom teachers, special educators, related service providers. But we felt like A.J. really delivered a message that could resonate with a large group of people. So I think one of the things that his keynote really got down to is this quote at the top. "Our job as teachers is not to prepare kids for something. Our job is to help kids learn to prepare themselves for anything." And that was something that he discussed in the graphic below. There's a laser pointer. Where he's talking about the four shifts that we can make in our classrooms, in our schools, to try to get our learners engaged. So he discussed a lot about how artificial intelligence is going to change the educational landscape. He gave teachers a preview into ways that students might be using artificial intelligence in the future, the way that teachers can use artificial intelligence in the future. And it really opened up a door to a lot of our educators who started to see some new possibilities for what they can do into their classroom and just for kind of reinforcing this idea that we have discussed that schooling right now isn't about memorizing facts anymore. It's about how do you find the knowledge? How do you assess the validity of the information that you find? How do you apply that knowledge? And A.J. Giuliani, again, he was able to really speak to the teachers on that. After, he gave a workshop that teachers could attend, and he worked with our leadership team later on in the day to help us think about how do we deliver this message in our buildings and throughout the district. We had all of these different workshops that teachers could sign up for. So we had a workshop on supporting student readers and writers across the curriculum. We had, A.J. did one called The Epic Guide to Student Engagement: Developing Student Centered Activities. He gave some really good examples of project based learning in that workshop that teachers could apply. Along the lines of project based learning, in my year and a half here, I heard from some teachers that they really wanted something for our early childhood educators. Because we talked about project based learning and it seems easier to do at the secondary level. But our pre-K through two teachers really wanted something tailored towards them. So we had a fantastic presenter talk about early childhood project based learning and what that looks like. Two sessions on AI, one for secondary teachers, one for elementary teachers. And we had two sessions that were run by our challenge success partners. One was on a toolkit for rethinking assessment. What I liked about that workshop is the presenter gave teachers access to this board that had hundreds of different engagement strategies in it. And then said, here's twenty five minutes to just explore it and to just spend some time with it. Because sometimes in these presentations, it's just a lot of talking and you don't actually get to explore the tools. So teachers really appreciated that. Then we had another presentation on how to make homework work and reconceptualizing what homework looks like, K through twelve. In the afternoon, we had the valuable time for our sixth through twelve departments to all meet. So despite sharing a campus, our middle school and our high school teachers don't have a ton of time to collaborate. So we are trying to set aside and be mindful about time to focus on our vertical alignment of curriculum and have them meet. So for example, our science department meant to talk about their claim evidence reasoning that they've been working on as a whole department. Our history department, six through twelve, meant to talk about document based questions and how to integrate primary sources more into education. So those proved to be really good conversations. Our special ed department was working with our special ed coordinators, thinking about the new IEP process. And our elementary teachers broke up K through two and three through five. Our K through two teachers got some professional development related to literacy, specifically thinking about decodable texts. We purchased these fantastic decodable texts from the Geodes collection. So our literacy coach led that professional development for our early childhood educators. And then in three through five, we looked at the psychology of engagement and active engagement strategies as part of a mini lesson that you would do with students. So you can see some pictures of that up here as well. Just some feedback on November PD. It was really interesting to hear from some of the elementary teachers that thought for the first time about how AI might make its way into an elementary classroom. I think at the secondary level, when we think about essays and ChatGPT, it feels more relevant to secondary teachers. So a bunch of the elementary teachers commented that, you know, it really allowed them to think about lesson planning, allowed them to think about individual student needs. Positive feedback about A.J. Giuliani's keynote. He was engaging, inspiring at this point in the year, people like that. People showed a lot of appreciation for the three parts of the day, the keynote, the workshop choice, and then that time to collaborate with colleagues in the afternoon. And then the last one I have down here is a teacher wrote, I love the statement, we need a reason for learning because it can change the trajectory of our lives. So a lot of the day and a lot of the quotes that teachers heard from people during the day, like I said, really resonated with them. So that was the November twenty seventh PD day. We followed up, we were lucky that we got to record a lot of our workshop presenters. So we followed up that day by sending out resources and slides to teachers. Specifically, one of the things that really caught on was AI. So we've been trying to give teachers resources and supports in thinking about how to use AI, which has led to some more robust discussions throughout the district about what is the district's stance on AI at the high school level? It's like we don't want our kids cheating and having AI write papers for them. But it's also really led down an interesting discussion about how our teachers and our staff can utilize AI in the classroom. So right up here is a website called Magic School. And you can see it can do a plethora of things for teachers. It can create a lesson plan, it can create a unit plan, it can make test or quiz questions, it can take a text and it can adapt it to different levels. So our teachers have really become interested in Magic School and all of its capabilities. So we're trying to give our teachers some professional development on how they can use AI to help with our best practice of individualization. So I wanted to show you how crazy all this AI stuff is. This is just a quick little video screencast that I made of going into Magic School. And what I'm doing here is I'm typing in the grade right here. I copy and pasted the Massachusetts framework from the math curriculum. And I typed in that I wanted to create a lesson that was for our multilingual learners and that also incorporated images and students love a Pokemon. So that's what I'm typing in there. And typing, still typing. And then I click submit. And this is in real time. You can see it putting together the lesson plan. It's going to give standards, it's going to give the objective, it's going to give things to consider when preparing the lesson for students. It's going to give hook ideas, assessment ideas, the whole lesson plan. And I show you this not because a lot of teachers are saying like, oh my God, we're going to be replaced by robots because that's not the case. But it really shows you that this can be a great seed of learning as teachers are starting to plan their lessons and could be just another support that teachers have. Because we hear from teachers all the time that they need more time. That's the biggest thing teachers want is more time. And this can be a huge time saver. Some of the lessons it puts together aren't very good, but it might give you some images that you might've spent a long time on Google image search trying to look for that you can get in ten seconds. It might give you some seeds for discussion questions that you might not have thought of. And when I was teaching, I would use to just Google things like stamped act lesson plan just to get some ideas. And what this really is, is a nice thought partner for our teachers. Especially when you have these wide variety of learners in your class. If you want to come up with a lesson or get some ideas on how you can incorporate more audio or some more music into your teaching. I've talked to a lot of teachers of middle school that are using it to throw in texts and it can adapt it to various reading levels, which has been helpful for our students. So lots of possibilities here for the teacher end to really make teachers more effective and to have them use their time in better ways. So we're excited about how we can show our teachers, how this can be a useful tool for them for planning. In terms of AI, on the student side of it, so all of the big AI tools like ChatGPT and Bard, which is the Google one, you technically need to be eighteen or over to use those. So we can't at this point have our students actually using them to do work. None of them have signed data privacy agreements as well. So that's something that we really look for in the district. So we anticipate in the future, once that all gets set, that we're going to need some district policies around students using AI, some maybe revisions to our honesty, academic honesty policy. And then teachers can leverage this tool in the classroom, probably at the secondary level first before the elementary school. But it certainly has gotten teachers abuzz with the possibilities of the future. One of the things that this led to was a lot of the feedback I got on the November twenty seventh session was like, we need to like talk, we want to tell you how we feel about AI in the classroom. So throughout January, I've held a bunch of AI listening sessions at all the buildings just to hear from teachers around this essential question. How can we, students and staff, leverage the use of AI to promote creativity and critical thinking while also maintaining authenticity and integrity in the learning process? And some of the major takeaways that I've gotten from these sessions. The first question that, how do we work with the technology that's advancing so rapidly that it feels like as soon as you learn something, something new has changed with it? I've been really interested in the conversations because almost everybody I've talked to have said, we don't want students to not use AI, but we need to help teach them how to better use it. So, you know, it was a fear that I had that people were going to say, we should just ban all this and not use it. The teachers are really wondering, how do we support students in using it? Having some conversations about some ethical things around it. I've mentioned, teachers have talked about the power of AI to differentiate for students. People have thought about the city of equity, so how can AI be a tool to promote equity? One thing that is great about things like ChatGPT is that for some students that might want some like individual tutoring, but maybe don't have the time or don't have the resources to get a tutor, AI can be that kind of one on one support for a lot of our students. So how can this be a tool to promote equity? How do we vertically scaffold student development of AI skills? Eventually, like, when are we going to start to teach students about this? In sixth grade and eighth grade? And we don't want to say, do the same lesson in sixth grade that we do in eighth grade. So how are we going to vertically scaffold that into students' curriculum? Academic integrity, we'd be no surprise that our English teachers are very concerned about this. You know, right now, AI and ChatGPT doesn't cite its sources. So it's just an interesting conversation that English teachers want to have with their students about the importance of saying where you get your material from. And in the future, how do you cite AI? And then perhaps the funnest of them all have been the philosophical questions that we've been discussing. Just this question of like, what is real? How are we going to be able to tell what is real and what is not anymore? And there's been so much stuff with audio and images where those lines are getting blurred. And I wish I could just teach a class called what is real. Fascinating to hear from the students on that. So I think those questions are going to be really fun for students to discuss as well. Last, actually, two more updates. MEKO two point O, I won't say a ton about that because Superintendent McCoy talked about that. But the Dover Sherborne is one of four districts that is part of the MEKO two point O committed district cohort. So what this basically means is that the four districts that are involved in this, they're getting customized coaching by Dr. Darnisa Monte Jackson and Dr. Lee Title. We're working together and we're meeting every other week or so to just talk about what we're seeing in our districts in terms of racial equity and how we want to better support our MEKO students. I would say big shift with MEKO two point O is thinking beyond just like, how do we support our MEKO students? But how do we create positive experiences and racial equity for every student in the district? And not just the MEKO students and not just focusing on MEKO as a busing program. But what are the ways that our MEKO students help enrich the communities that they go to? And how do our communities enrich the lives of our MEKO students and our MEKO families? So our DS team is listed up there. And then the last little thing I'll talk about is just an update on the math pilot. On March fifth, the Sherborne and the Dover School Committees are going to be meeting to discuss this more. But just to update you until we get to that point, as a reminder, we're piloting two programs this year, Reveal Math and Illustrative Math. It's been a very, very busy year for the pilot. Our teachers made site visits to Canton and they do Reveal there, to Lexington where they do Illustrative. We've been doing interviews with local math directors and assistant superintendents about their math programs. We've been giving common assessments so that students that are in Reveal, Illustrative, or are still using Everyday Math, we're going to be able to have common data to compare student outcomes. We just moved past just the pilot teachers and gave presentations at all the faculty meetings. Right now, we want to get feedback from all the classroom teachers and special educators on these programs because we've reached a point where it's going to affect more than just the pilot teachers now. We've been gathering feedbacks, using feedback using two rubrics. We've been doing a ton of observations. My goal has been between now and February break to get into each math pilot classroom three times to see it in action. And our building leaders have been in classrooms. Our math coach has been doing a tremendous amount of work in these classrooms. So we're hoping that when we see you all on March fifth, we'll be able to give a potential recommendation for which program we are going to go with. I'm still TBD on which one. My mind changes every week based on the classroom I'm in or based on something a student shows me. So I, that's the good news is I feel very confident that we have two very high quality programs that we're going to be choosing from. Which one it is, we'll see. Suspense. All right, so that is a long Assistant Superintendent update. Happy to take any questions.
Question?
Yeah.
Jeff? Thanks, Denny. I find it, it's sort of an interesting time where we go through the presentation on AI and how it's potentially changing the way we teach kids and potentially individual learning plans and such. And then we're talking about like holistically sort of diving into one of two new programs. Do you have any concern that it might be like, almost like starting like at the wrong time? Like maybe if we'd done this five years ago, it would make more sense? Like is, are things moving quicker in the curriculum development? Where it might be something we'd actually want to switch to in three years from now? Like as you think through this, this whole pilot program?
I think, I think the beauty of both of these programs is that they are a lot more conceptual. So we're focusing on our students and their math practice standards. So just mathematical thinking and the ways and the skills that we want our students to develop as mathematicians and critical thinkers. They all have a lot of really important connections to the real world and to the real life. So whether that's thinking about, you know, rainforest in Borneo or one of the examples that we talked about yesterday at the presentation was about a cheese market in Europe. And how do the people that are at the cheese market decide how many wheels of cheese they need to bring out every morning? Like they're all these skills that students can see right in front of them, why it's important and why it matters. A lot of it is based not on the importance of finding that right answer at the end, but it's students looking at different problems, like sample problems where a fake student made an accident in the word problem that they're doing. And students try to explain why that student might've made, had a different way of thinking and how they might've gotten to that wrong answer and what they might've done differently. A lot of this is about math discourse and the way that students talk about concepts and ideas. I've seen that in both programs. They're both really empowering for students to say like, math might not be the thing I feel most strong in, but I'm going to take a risk and I'm going to have this conversation with my partner about this banana bread recipe and how I can use fractions to help solve this banana bread recipe. So I think that it actually is coming at a very good time where we're moving to programs that are going to be really malleable and be able to evolve with AI and what A.J. Giuliani would call these like major hinges of history that we're in with the shift to AI. So I think this is a good time to be looking at a new math program, actually. Thanks.
Quick question too, thank you. So for comparing the two programs, are we also looking at MCAS results of two different districts using each of these to compare them to? As one of the metrics to compare?
So yeah, so we can look at some of the metrics. Reveal's in your program, so there are less districts that are using Reveal. I would say, you know, for the sake of the two sites that we visited, Lexington and Canton are very different districts. Some of the other districts that use Reveal, Mashpee, I'm blanking on some of the other ones. They're not good comparisons necessarily to us. One of the things that we are looking at internally is not just these common assessments, but also our students and IXL, which is the kind of diagnostic that they're using. So we have a lot of different data points and we're going to be presenting those data points to you in March, whenever whichever program we recommend. But I will say too, I mean, a lot of the districts that we compare ourselves to, the Wellesley's, Westons, Lexington's, use Illustrative.
So does, I understand what this does for like key to five, okay? And maybe even middle school. But when you get to, you know, algebra, geometry, are tho, those are still taught in a more traditional way? And does the learning from these programs carry over or the teaching, the methodology carry over to a better way to teach calculus, for example?
I mean, I think that some of what our best practices embody in terms of student voice, agency, critical thinking are what we're trying to incorporate more into even like the high school math classes right now. Geometry, we're looking at like sustainability and how you can make the most out of a space and how math and, you know, problem solving can be used to help with city planning in the future. So we're really trying to take the best practices and use them to infuse those same conceptual ideas at the high school level, the middle school level. But it probably will shift some of the stuff that's on the secondary level. And I anticipate, once we adopt a program, that we're going to have our middle school teachers going down to the elementary levels to see what these programs are all about. They'll be inheriting these students. So it'll be important for them to see, get an understanding of what these programs are like. And I'm sure there will be some curriculum tweaks and things that will happen at the middle school level and then eventually at the high school level.
Thank you.
On the AI point, recognize that there may be limited access for kids. But for the teachers, others that are sort of in the district, are there standards or best practices you guys are suggesting to them around this use? I mean, the idea of helping to get started on a lesson plan is a good idea. I could also see some off ramps as well that might be more troubling. So I didn't know if you've kind of thought through that angle of it at the adult level.
It's a great question. I should have mentioned, that was part of what those AI listening sessions were also designed to do was to get ahead of some of those guidelines for teachers. So I'm going to take the information we got from those listening sessions. Another step feedback, a bunch of teachers are going to an AI conference at Bentley in March. So after that, that's when we're going to try to sit down and put something into a document. Like the technology pieces, privacy stuff, Anthony Rotacco is working in the background. I'm getting that stuff all launched. I guess that at some point, MASC is going to be conquering AI and school committee policies and whatnot as well. So I think it'll all converge at some point.
Just as a follow up, like the, the technology and the questions you're talking about are also being litigated and talked about and evaluated out in the world with adults and business. I'm curious how you think about like maintaining those policies as things are changing so fast. It certainly won't be on a six year cycle. Like what do you think about that?
I think because it's changing so fast, it's going to have to be a living document. That's why I think there will be a difference between policy, which is you all, and guidelines, which is kind of the teaching and learning piece. And I think those guidelines are going to be shifting and updated. Those are going to be that Google Doc that is constantly evolving. A lot of it is going to just be giving our teachers time to talk to each other and to collaborate with each other. And I think we'll learn a lot in that. But like I said, I'm just more excited that teachers are trying to lean into this rather than freak out about it. Because there's a lot to be freaked out about. Not to throw an existential crisis.
Well, it's another example of how it's been fulfilled. Kate McCarthy, for those of you who haven't met her, is our Director of Student Services. And she was asked to cover a FLESC class at an elementary school one day. And so she Googled the lesson or she went into Magic School and she came out with this lesson and did it with the kids and she got rave reviews about how engaging it was and how much Spanish they used. So.
That's exciting.
Provides more opportunities.
Other questions? Denny, thank you. So we have some sort of visitors here for the students in the district that are here.
So we have some sort of visitors here for the students in the district that are here to update us on some of the calendar task force. I'm going to flip the agenda around a bit to be cognizant of, of their schedules and other, other demands on their time. So if everybody's okay with that, maybe we'll flip over and go to the task force update for the calendar.
All right. I'll just launch us. So I want to introduce five of our amazing students who have donated hours and hours and hours of their time to do research, to gather input, to think critically about the needs of our students in our community. So we have Amber Nie, Anika Gupta, Shreya Altore, Iris Chen, and Fred Curtin with us this evening. I first want to thank them for their time. I also want to recognize Judy, Christine, and Goli, who served on the committee. We spent 14 hours together, looking at data, creating surveys, having difficult conversations. And then there was all the homework that we did in between the meetings. So this was a huge time commitment and I just want to thank the people who are in this room, as well as the teachers and parents and other folks who aren't in this room, administrators. So without further ado, our five bright and shining students are going to try to take our 14-hour journey that we've been on and give it to you in a bite size so you can chew on it. And then my guess is you're going to need some time to catch up and really process it. Take it away. Do you want the clicker?
So hi, everyone. We're with the calendar task force. So we started the task force because of the community comments and recommendations from the audit. A lot of people were asking for more inclusivity for religious and cultural holidays. And they talked about elementary students who liked finding books about holidays such as Diwali, Eid, and other holidays in classroom and school libraries. This one talks about how they like, the parents and students like the work done so far to include more cultural holidays and cultures. So these are members of the task force. There was a pretty wide variety from all across the district. There are students, parents, educators, all everything. So some of the goals of our thing, so we want to maintain academic excellence and continuity of learning. That was a big thing. We also want to provide more opportunities for students to learn about the different holidays and cultures while in school. We want to divert, honor the diverse religious and cultural practices of community members. And we also want to make sure that we are adhering to state and federal regulations regarding mandated holidays and instructional time. So we started way back in May and it took us all the way here in January. We started with an outline. We sent out a few surveys from the community and then we did some research and we developed proposals and gathered feedback. And you're here right now. We found this proposal and we're here to present. So some areas of research, we talked, we looked specifically at students and the demographic demographics in our district and the priorities that they had relative to the school calendar. We also took, looked at student and staff attendance rates on holidays on our school distance session, see who might need a leave of absence on those days. And we talked, looked at the celebrations and rituals for each of the community and identified holidays and the types of accommodations students and members of the district might need as a result. Like some students might need no homework within early lease day or fully off of school because of their celebrations. We also looked at school calendars from districts around us and comparable districts, things like extracurriculars, activities and sports where we had in common. So we need to align our calendars, align our calendars with theirs. And we looked at the impact of additional no-school days on the length of the school year and the schedules and childcare needs of families and staff. So right now, this is what our school year looks like. We start school on the Wednesday before Labor Day. We have 181 school days and the required federal holidays we have right now are New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, Washington's birthday, Memorial Day, Juneteenth, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day slash Indigenous Peoples' Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day. We also have a few additional holidays other than the federal holidays. We have Yom Kippur, Ashishana, the day for Christmas, and Good Friday. And our current school vacations are in December, February, and April. And we have a few early lease days, which are the day before Thanksgiving and 10 early lease days for elementary, eight for the middle school, and six for the high school. Some parameters and considerations that we're going to take in consideration while doing this. So the state law mandates only 180 school days. And for each of the schools, elementary schools needs 100 hours of time on learning. The middle school needs 990 hours. And seniors must attend minimum of 168 days. And the school year can't go past June 30th. Some other considerations, we're also looking at the consistency of learning in exams, activities and athletic schedules, the educated professional development, employee contracts, and childcare and family schedules for people in the district.
Steph, Fred. Yep.
Yeah. All right. So these are the questions on survey one. Do you need an exemption or time off from school for any religious or cultural observations? These are other than the status quo mandated holidays or the ones we provide. In order for DS to have more accurate information about diversity within our community, please check all that apply to your family. We then listed a lot of holidays, then we had a section for others if they wanted to put in another one. Below is a list of some religious or cultural, cultural observations. For any of the observations that apply to you, please indicate the related impact on your availability of school day. So we list some, some common ones that have been requested. And then we either had, either said that they could attend the whole day, they would want to attend a half day, or they'd want the whole day off. That helps us get an indication on how like important these days are to have off for these people. Please tell us about any other religious or cultural observations that are not listed and may have an impact on school day. Any additional information that may help the committee understand the observance of holiday, of the holiday? Again, that's similar to the last one. We're trying to gauge how important these holidays are to have off. And we're also trying to see if we missed any. DS schools must meet state-to-state required minimum number of days. As we are gaining perspective from the community, do you have any suggestions on how we may accommodate both additional observed holidays and meet the required in-school number of days? This also goes to whether students want to prioritize or staff members who gave a survey to, want to prioritize having more holidays than meet more diversity, or they more believe in having a shorter school year? With 181 days to work with, we are, we have completing, we have competing priorities in terms of allocating in-school and out-of-school days. Please indicate the factors which are most important to you. First one is honoring diversity, representation, inclusivity in our observed holidays. Second one, maximizing continuity of learning with the fewest interruptions, days off possible, and securing the earliest possible last day of school. That goes, connects back to the last question. To address your top priority above, please select your preference from the following priorities: maintain current calendar, reduce non-mandated holiday, reduce non-mandatory holidays, eliminate non-mandated holidays, and add additional holidays. These are the three proposal, three of these proposals are what we are agreeing towards to get today. If you have any additional suggestions or thoughts regarding the questions above, please share here. This didn't cover everything. We just wanted students to have an opportunity to give their thoughts. So any questions about this slide or survey questions? Great. Oh, four questions. Serial questions, so these are only for students. Wow. When school is non-session due to a cultural slash religious observance, please select the option that best describes your experience with work that is assigned and deal with the following day. So we're just trying to get a gauge of when students do have to step out of school on a non-day off for our observation. We want to get an idea of how much workload this puts on them. And that's, again, helps us gauge how important it is to observe these days or policy changes. In the past, if school has been session during a religious or cultural holiday you observe, did you attend school anyways? We're just trying to see if students still had to go to school and if they didn't necessarily want to do a religious or cultural observation. Do you or would you feel comfortable asking teachers for flexibility with assignment, homework, and exams so that you can observe a cultural or religious holiday? This more goes into the culture of the school and how accepting teachers are or just the confidence students have of going to teachers and advocating for themselves. Have extracurricular activities or athletics ever interfered with your ability to celebrate a religious or cultural observations? If so, how? Again, this just goes back to how accommodating the different organization that the school are to people who have observations. And if anyone has recommendations, they could put it there. Any questions about these? Great. All right. So here are the results of our first community survey. In total, there were 845 respondents, including 204 students, 499 parents or caregivers, and 142 staff members. The students prioritized honoring diversity and representation in the school. Families prioritized continuity of learning with the fewest interruptions possible. Staff prioritized securing the earliest possible last day of school with the perks of equity, with the other two factors being close behind. Students indicated stress and tension as a result of having to choose their family, faith, and culture and school when school is in session on a holiday they observe. More than half chose they attend school anyways. Any questions about our findings here? Ms. Grossman or?
Oh, yeah. Thanks. And you might not know this answer, so maybe you guys do. What percentage of our district is that? Like 499 parents and caregivers, sounds like a lot, but how many parents and caregivers are in our district? And I guess I have the same question, like about how many students didn't fill out the survey and teachers. I'm trying to understand like what these numbers mean.
I know I've asked our data person before how many unique family units we have in the district, and I want to say 1,200 rings a bell. But this might be where there's two parents or caregivers from the same family answering. Some folks in this survey might have done it more than once, which is possible. In terms of staff members, we have roughly 200 teachers and 80 EAs. So it could be a combination of those. And students, we asked six through 12. So you're talking about 1,100 students.
I was going to say that it's like all statistics, you should always take with a grain of salt. This is more just indicating a suggestion rather than telling you what to choose. Okay, so is someone else on the slide or is someone? District? Oh, you have it.
They're all well-versed in all of the slides. That's the problem.
So of the 499 family responses, this is kind of the religious demographics that we got. I would like to point out that 31% of the people who responded either prefer not to say are atheists or other. And this can also sometimes relate to the Lunar New Year or other cultural holidays which don't directly connect to a religion. So.
No, it's the other way. It's very tricky.
Yeah. And then here's some data just to compare. This is just the general Boston area as well as some more percentages. But it doesn't, it's not necessarily a reflection of Dover Sherburne. Okay, so these are the district demographics for our schools. They're the percent of population. So this is like 70%, 7%, 5%, 13%, 2%. And I'd like to point out the Asian demographic is the second highest percentage, which those are most likely to celebrate the Lunar New Year and Diwali. So we asked students, do you need time exemption or off from school for any religious or cultural observations other than the mandated holidays? And 48.7% of the students who answered the survey, which was only 189, said that they needed, which is a hu- huge percentage of them. And maybe they're taking those days off or maybe they're not, but they feel like what's given to them now, their holiday, they need to take off the time and they would like the time off. This is some more data about, we asked people what their most requested day they would like. The Lunar New Year, again, is not a culture associated with a religion, it's associated with a culture. So that's why it does fall under this category instead of identify with a religion.
Sorry, can you go back? I had a question when I was looking at this earlier. So is the right way to interpret this for like families, for example? 77 families are, want Christmas Eve off even though they do not celebrate or identify with that religion?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, is it 77 families or 77 individuals?
77 fam, like responses from families out of the 400.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
So as you can see, our students, it doesn't matter what their religion is, they like the days off.
Whoa.
Although, yeah, Lunar New Year is, you would have to select that or some might not associate with any religion. And then this is just data about students taking the day off during those holidays. And it shows a percent increase, although in parentheses is how many more students will take those day off. For the Lunar New Year, we do only have the middle school data. But it also, you can interpret this as students might not feel like, especially in the high school, that they can take the day off because they might be missing lectures, important assignments, myself included. Because although homework might be excused, tests might not be assigned necessarily, but it, the importance of being in the classroom and getting that feedback from the teachers and your peers around is so important and is so tragic to lose and having to like weigh that, like do I owe my family or my studies?
Can I, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Because I don't remember this and I don't understand what's up there.
Do you want me to help?
Yeah.
Okay. So we took all four schools and we looked at on these three holidays over a couple of years, what is in general across 180 days, the average number of dismissals, the average attendance, and the average number of tardies. And then we looked at these holidays and said, is there a significant difference? And so Diwali, you see that there was an uptick in dismissals, but at the end of the day, our attendance in Dover Sherburne is pretty excellent. So 22% increase is really only two kids. Whereas Pine Hill had 11% increase in tardies, which equates to two students. If you look at Lunar New Year, the only one school that had a statistical, well, not even statistical, a uptick in attendance variation was the middle school. I don't know what happened on that day, but we had 16 tardies. And then eight early dismissals and Eid, no substantial shifts in what.
That's interesting.
Average attendance would be.
So this is where I get like two in my brain to, so is that statistically significant or is that not based on our typical attendance?
I would say it's, it's not because the numbers are so little because our attendance is so good.
It could be anomalies in a day.
Right. And also, I'm sorry.
It is interesting to compare to the 40% of responders of the survey who said that they would like accommodations or they need the accommodations compared to those who are actually taking the day off.
Right. It also depends on whether these days fall on a Friday or a Monday, and somebody might be taking a long weekend. There was one year, something fell on the 22nd of December. So then people were out the 22nd, the 23rd, and then all the way through, whether or not they celebrated that holiday, I don't know. That was a huge uptick, but we kind of took that as people just extending the winter break.
This data shows, this was from our research, shows comparable top districts to our district and holidays that they celebrate. So two that I want to point out is Wellesley and Hawkington. They both acknowledge all the holidays that we do as well as Diwali, Lunar New Year, and Eid.
And could we just not get the data for Concord?
Um.
They don't, they don't, they don't do any of these. Dashes mean they don't. Yeah, whatever.
Yeah. So the dash means they don't have day off.
So, okay, they have a secular solution.
And then these are districts that have only mandated, so secular calendars. And then these are local private schools that, and the holidays that they take off.
In addition to.
In addition to secular. Okay. So when, including the mandated holidays and the other holidays included our calendar, we currently attend 181 school days. And this is the proposed, like the assumed day of scheduled ending with snow days and without snow days in the next. of scheduled ending with snow days and without snow days in the next upcoming 10 years. And then if you add the three days that are, the three holidays that are in consideration, which is Lunar New Year, Diwali, and Eid, it actually only averages out to about two days added on to each year, because sometimes they might fall on the weekends or in already school schedule breaks, with only, like, up in, like, 2032 being, like, the year, the only year in the next 10 years that all three days would be added. Whereas in 2027, only one more day would be added. So that's an interesting, yes.
Yeah, and that doesn't include, we could decide to drop it from 181 to 180, although I understand there may be some issues with professional days, yes?
You'd have to negotiate the professional days.
Yeah. So that's not necessarily a done deal. I'm not saying we necessarily think that's a good idea, but if we did that, then each of the numbers at the bottom would go down by one.
Then if that were to be considered, then it would only be an average of one day added to the calendar.
So quick question, because we haven't really approved calendars this far forward. Did you get the... Yeah, right? Did you get the end date with, how did you choose the starting date? Was it August 30th every year, or what did you?
The Wednesday before Labor Day.
That's what you chose as a constant.
Mrs. Denny and I, Friday Night Project, he and his couch, me on mine, and we just split it up.
Thank you.
Do we have any data about how frequently we've had snow days over the past, I don't know, five years or whatever? I'm just looking at, like, 628 versus 621, for example, in '26, '27. Doesn't seem like a big difference, but, and it came through in some of the comments, right, Pine Hill doesn't have air conditioning, which I know is a whole nother conversation that we're having, but it's a difference. So I'm curious how frequently, or if there's any sense of, like, how often do we even have snow days? It seems like not very often.
Not very often. I mean, I've been a parent in the district now for 11 years, and I can't think of a year that we had more than two.
2015.
Yeah, 2015, we had, like, one a week for six weeks.
Yes. 2012.
Snowmageddon.
But that's not common.
It's right. But now, I think with the extreme temperature that you're experiencing, you can't really rely on not having five days.
Yeah, and another variation, too, is depending on the year and where Christmas, which is a federally mandated holiday, and New Year's fall, which is also a federally mandated holiday, sometimes we get only a week off for winter break, sometimes we get two, so that pushes things out, too. Like, next year, we get, well, depending on what you decide, could have two full weeks.
And then, like, Juneteenth is probably impacting that 26, 27.
It pushes you out a next day.
Last day of school, Monday that nobody wants.
Right, nobody wants. Everybody's gonna skip that, right?
Any other questions? And then these are just general agreements as, like, a school task force we came up with. So we want to educate students about various holidays as they occur throughout the year. One of the proposals tonight is adding only three holidays, but then we want to also include education about all the holidays that might occur and that students in our community might celebrate. We want to also ensure that students and faculty adhere to school committee policies relative to attendance and coursework on and around various holidays. And consider the impact of scheduled athletic events and extracurricular activities on and around various holidays, because some, any holidays that aren't considered a day off from school, there could be an athletic event scheduled on that day. We also think strong community support for starting December vacation on or before the 24th, not necessarily for religious reasons, but rather to extend the break. And of course, you all have that decision to decide when it starts and when it doesn't. But the 24th is not included in federal mandated holidays. And then this is the school committee's policy, IMDC. Teachers should use good judgment and be especially sensitive to the feelings of students who might not wish to participate for religious reasons. Requests for excusal and school activities associated with these holidays are granted. When students are absent from school for the purpose of religious observances during religious holidays, it is expected that, one, teachers should not in good faith conduct special or unique activities which will cause those students to miss out on an important curriculum event. Two, teachers should not in good faith administer quizzes or tests on that day. Three, teachers will keep homework expectations reasonable, and the due date will be extended as needed to allow for religious observances. Four, teachers will provide opportunity and time to make up any work missed on that day as defined in the student handbook. Five, teachers will give extra help and additional support to those who require such attention. And finally, six, teachers will not in good faith require projects or long-term assessments due on the day of or the day after a religious holiday. Any questions? Sit down. So as Patrick mentioned, we conducted a second survey, which, I guess, if I just boil it down, we just wanted to see what our community members preferred. So our first option was only the federally mandated holidays. Our second option was the status quo. And our third option was the add-three option, so the Lunar New Year, Diwali, and Eid. And as you can tell, obviously, students, the overwhelming majority chose adding three of those holidays. For our families, they preferred the status quo. And for our staff, they also preferred the same. And then we also wanted to see what we wanted to do with Good Friday. Did we want to have it as a school day off, an early release, or actually have school on that day? And students, again, they wanted that day off. The families wanted it a school day, and the staff preferred the early release.
Sorry, can I ask a question? I'm really hung up on these numbers a little bit. I'm just trying to understand, is this a fair representation of our community? Like, having 436 responses and 1,200 families?
These numbers are statistically significant. The average days absent is not, just because of the way, like, this is a good sample size, yeah.
Liz, just to put in perspective, the library just did a survey, and they got 10% of the population and are pretty happy with it.
Yeah, and being someone who gives a lot of surveys, this is high for us.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to change.
This is an important topic.
Yeah, I'm trying to understand, like, yeah.
And so I just wanted to also synthesize what we found from these surveys. And a quote that was particularly, that stood out to all of us was a quote from the staff who said that the most equitable solution is to create a secular or federal holiday calendar, and that their suggestion was that the high school should create a no-assessment calendar that recognizes the need for students to be able to take a day off without worry that they will fall behind with regards to making up assessments. And then if we also go on to the parents, another quote that also stood out to us was a parent saying that, given the increasing diversity in our community, that they personally believe that it would work best to remove all non-federal holidays, as it would allow us to treat all religions and cultural holidays equally and give everyone a fair opportunity to request accommodations as needed. And those were the two quotes that I really wanted to highlight, because that's what the calendar task force was also talking about in our conversations. And then also just the considerations for this federally mandated holidays-only option was the consistency of learning throughout the year, or access to learning prior to spring. MCAS and AICD, which is huge in all three of our schools. And also with the air conditioning at Pine Hill, I know a teacher did bring up in the survey that they wanted a shorter year so that they don't have to teach students in the hot building, because it would be easier. And also, families would need the additional childcare in case a caregiver or a parent needs to go to work on a day that school's off. And then also, students and families have greater options for the summer travels, summer programs, especially in, like, high school, when all of those start up, and then also, like, summer camp and everything. And then another thing was the last day of school, break from June 10th to June 16th, assuming that there are no school days, as Amber talked about. And then also, the DS staff with children in the other districts may have conflicting schedules, so, yeah.
So it's kind of like the pros, the fact, and the cons, yeah.
Why don't we just air-condition Pine Hill?
Working on it.
I'm just...
Judy, come to the next Sherburne School meeting in the front row.
Community comments, Judy.
All right. Miss me, guys? I'll be dead. If you're dead, this is going to be a short part, so. All right, so I think this first quote is rather indicative of the general student attitude. I don't celebrate any of these holidays. I just want days off. Really. So there's a terrible time in history to dishonor the Jewish people by taking away school observations of their holidays. Korean式 calendar only does only that. It does not actually remove any Christian holidays from the calendar. This could represent some backlash that could be received if the first option could be taken. Another thing which I think does actually go to something that was in the first part is generally lean towards a floating holiday-type approach, where only the federal holidays are given holidays, but the programming is very light on days like Good Friday. I don't know why this isn't a slide, this sounds rather on the first point, but it also does show some support on this side for having it so that even with the keeping the status quo, there's still a movement to have it so that kids can still advocate and have days, have sort of the no-test schedule. It's helpful for my family, oh, it's helpful for my family if these holidays are aligned with our districts. I'm a teacher in Houston Public Schools, and it can be difficult to find childcare when our holidays and starts don't match. Thanks for taking on this issue. So some parents would like having the more continuity between different school district calendars, and the status quo is decently aligned with them. So let's go to the considerations. So the first big one is it does not increase equity or inclusivity of additional cultures slash religions, which we have stated earlier is a concern among students and is also one of the aims of our committee. But the other thing, on the other hand, this doesn't really go into adding more holidays, this doesn't have, doesn't really pick and choose between which holidays to add. Also, this holds a plurality vote with family and staff, and this would also, I'm guessing, be more desirable to people, especially the very overwhelming students who want to have more days added. I'm going to infer that they'd rather have the status quo maintained than lose days. So I think what this really comes down to is there's two conflicting things kind of students. On one hand, they've indicated they do not want days, these holidays, taken off the calendar, but they're also indicating that they want more equity to be brought onto the calendar. And I think from just the perspective of this committee, I think we should be focusing on a, aiming on representing more equity in religions and cultures. But that's for you guys to decide by looking at this data. I personally say, if you were to go with a status quo, I do think that you should implement a part of the first consideration, the first, the consideration or first proposal, first proposal of taking them off of having it so that kids are more encouraged to be able to go to their teachers and let them know that they have a holiday they're celebrating that day, and for them, the teachers, to understand that and also schedule their calendars around that so that those days are less pressured. All right, next one. Who's that? Ariana, go.
Wait, what button is this?
It's the down button goes down.
That's the most confusing thing I've ever seen in my life.
Yeah.
So these were some of the comments that we received in the second survey about adding more holidays. So I'll just read a couple of them. This one, this person was talking about, the projections seem to make it that adding the three holidays have very little impact on the length of the school year, and some educationally strong schools have already included these holidays. Since such holidays uphold diversity and most likely don't majorly affect education, it seems like a good idea to incorporate them. And then there's some support for taking off a couple of the holidays. This is a student who wants a day off after Halloween. I'm not the only thing to consider.
I'm so glad you listened.
There is also a comment about how days off can be beneficial for students' health, breaking up education a little bit sometimes to give people a little bit of time to relax and catch up on work with extracurriculars and everything. And this is a comment from staff. At the end of the day, we can't do it all, but I believe having these holidays off from school will significantly help create windows and mirrors for students, especially students who may not currently feel seen. This is actually one comment. It's very long, so I'm just going to read some short snippets of it. So, let's see. There's something powerful about inclusion, and I think it's something that Dover Sherburne community could use some more of. To remove all excess holidays would be to say there's too much diversity, that we cannot include all of it. That is not the Dover Sherburne I've come to know and love. And then going on further, if we want to honestly say that people of all different walks of life are welcome in this community, we need to show that by actually welcoming them into our community. We don't need to strip away tenants and values that we've held forever, but we can alter them. In order to accept, we must integrate new families into our own. So, yeah, this is... All right. And these are some considerations when thinking about adding three holidays. So some of the pros would be that additional religions and cultures are recognized with more days off, and also, students appreciate opportunities to rest and to complete work in those few scattered days off throughout the year. And then, again, this is, the last day of school would range from the 18th to the 23rd of June without snow days if we did add these holidays. Oh, and another thing that I want to mention is that from the second survey, for people who chose status quo, we don't have information on what their second choice would be. This is something in personal conversations that I've had, people who chose status quo, they had different opinions on what their second choice would be after that, and we don't necessarily have the data on what that choice would be. And then this is some of the cons, that there are still some religions and cultures that would not be recognized. There are families who would require childcare and would need to find that to accommodate these extra days. And then the lack of air conditioning at the Pine Hill, again, might be a concern. And there is a potential delay with the dates of senior activity and graduation. And these are just the last few thoughts. So there's also support for adding in some Orthodox holidays. So this is, again, some of the people who have other holidays that aren't being considered in these proposals, but there are other people in the district who have other religious observances. This one is talking about making room for non-Judeo-Christian holidays. Currently, of the religious holidays that we are not mandated that we celebrate, those are Judeo-Christian holidays, so making room for some other ones. Also, prioritizing days off for fasting holidays, that could be strenuous on the people we celebrate. And then the Halloween one, I guess.
Oh, and this is me. All right, so we had 20 people on the task force initially, and due to a number of reasons, we kind of dwindled over time, and this represents, I believe, 18 of us. So as you can see, if you ask the people who went on this 14-hour journey together, after looking at the data, reading all the comments, having conversations, learning about other religions and cultures and rituals, 55% of them are leaning towards having a secular calendar where we only celebrate mandated holidays. 28% are in favor of adding the three holidays, and 16 or 17% are in favor of the status quo. Their recommendation relative to Good Friday is really only change it if you're going to add three holidays, then make it an early release day. That said, this is a data point, we talked about this. We know there's a difference between a majority and consensus, so you can see where the majority opinion is. Consensus, it says, you know, not everybody agrees, but everybody can live with it, and that was not the case of our committee. There were certainly people on our committee who said, I cannot live with a secular calendar. We can't give you an official vote tonight because we are very split. That said, we're 14 hours ahead of the journey. I think that this group did a great job of modeling for our community what constructive civil discourse can look like, what learning and listening to others can look like. And so I encourage you to engage in that tonight if you need more time to engage in that and perhaps with others moving forward, because certainly, I think this group did a great job, and appreciate all of the work that you did and all the conversations. And the last piece I want to mention is, the last meeting is, many of us came in May with one idea of the calendar that we thought would be best. 69% of the committee changed their mind, their mind between May and now, because of the conversations, because of the discourse. Sixty-nine percent of the committee changed their mind, their mind between May and now because of the conversations, because of the discourse. So see, there's power in listening and learning. So we leave the next steps up to you about how much time you need to process, what other data and research you might need that we can help you with or that you can collect on your own. Um, as a side note, I've talked to several superintendents um, who have all of these different calendars. So I'm happy to give, provide you insight into what they offer in all three situations. Um, but before we turn it over to you, I just want to thank our students for coming tonight.
I just add to what you said.
Yep.
In addition to being so thankful for all of your time and people who aren't here this time. I think we should pause and recognize how awesome it is that our community would have this conversation. It's not easy.
Yeah.
That says a lot.
I also wanted to thank our students and also um, I was on the task force and I learned a lot from all the members. And I really appreciate everybody's volunteer work and that. And I also wanted to commend you for leading us through this. It was, you did an amazing job. Leading the whole task force, making sure that we are all getting engaged in really helpful conversations while being respectful. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. I'm proud of you all. I'm sure you have other things you need to do. Um, it's not easy to get up in front of eighteen adults. You have a lot to be proud of and a lot of bragging to do.
Yes.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Questions. Quick, quick question for you. Related to some of the comments, the only missing part is families having trouble with childcare and such. One of the ones that I think as I was reading through it, somebody was pointing out the Wednesday half-days. What's the history on why Wednesday?
Why Wednesday? Because um, I think that the point of early release dates is to provide educators with opportunities for professional development. And there is a lot more brain power on a Wednesday than a Friday afternoon. And we know that if we make it a Friday or a Monday, attendance is gonna decrease significantly because people will go away for long weekends and take ski weekends. Before my time, Pine Hill used to have, or the elementaries used to have how many?
Elementary had every Wednesday.
Now we're at ten, so counter blessing.
I know neither does every other day, like every other week. But I was curious, because somebody put in the comments, uh, when I was reading them, like, why don't we have these on Fridays? Like where it would be less disruptive or for the family because they might have somebody who's more available on a Friday to, to help out, so. Which is a history question.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I ask how those are counted? Are those counted as full days or does two?
Full days.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have the same question, to confirm that the half-day counts as a day.
Yes, yeah.
But that's where the hours come into, you have to make sure that the total.
Yeah, the good news is that um, we're supposed to have nine hundred hours at the elementary level. Right now, we're at nine hundred fifty-five.
With the half-days.
With the half-days. So we're fifty-five hours, you know, more of teaching and learning. At that, um, secondary level, we need nine ninety and we're at basically ten thirty.
So there is room to play with the half-days if we want.
Yeah, I just want to um, make a suggestion. Um, and I'm gonna preface this by saying I was on the start times committee. And many of you were on school committee then or, or lived in this town and knew how difficult that process was. Making that decision was a lot easier for me than um, grappling with the issues that arise when you're discussing um, these issues. Particularly in the context of what's been going on in the world. And so my suggestion is that we, we take some time to do a little learning, maybe have a workshop and bring in some speakers who can talk to some of these issues. And, and then come up with a framework for maybe discussing it in our individual committees, maybe coming back together and discussing it. Um, but, but it's really a tough issue. And I had, had a great deal of difficulty on this committee. Everybody but me was really civil and nice. No, I'm serious, I'm serious. I had to ask Beth to mute me, okay?
And then she got muted herself.
But, but, but I just think, you know, we, we all come to this with certain sort of knee-jerk reactions without necessarily hearing the opposing, the opposing views. I think everybody, everybody wants the same things, you know? Everybody wants to get out of school at the beginning of June and everybody wants Christmas Eve off. And everybody wants to, wants diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, how do we get there? And I don't have the answer, but I think as a collective group, that, that path for me would seem um, reasonable. And I've done a lot of thinking about this over the last year, so that's all.
Question. What prompted this evaluation? What? I wasn't around, like, why did we start this investigation?
So we go back to the first slide. Um, so at our September joint meeting last year, um, uh, so like a year and a half ago. And then at this meeting last year, when we were talking about the calendars, there was community comments from both students, many of the same ones that you saw here, and families requesting that we look at additional holidays. Um, and then the whole idea, you know, of thinking about the equity audit and what is equity? What is inclusivity? Is it going, rolling forward and adding holidays? Is it rolling back so that some aren't left out?
I, I have a question and I'm probably gonna be the least popular person in the room, but that won't be the first time. So the thing that I was wondering, because I know we have the two breaks, the February and April. And when I arrived here, like the school that, where I came from, I came from Georgia. We only had one in March. So I know that everybody does the two breaks, but does like alleviating any of that? I know it's not a popular view, but it is two, two, two weeks that are in there.
In two thousand and eleven, we actually looked at that? Because I was on the calendar committee at the time. And when staff, like the February and April breaks, that was, I mean, time has changed, but those breaks are needed. I'll tell you, being in a school district, like, we're like, when's that? And it's also, March is hard with the MCAS. So there's, there's conflicting. And it's also hard when we looked at our staff and where they lived. It's gonna be impossible unless the whole state moves that direction.
True.
You can't break from that.
I'm sorry. Because I know too, like, for the senior, because my daughter, when she was a senior, I remember the whole thing too. Like she was, well, behind, but they had to like hoof it to get to the AP exam because, you know, people in other regions, they've started school before, so they're ahead of them. And so they're, you know, they're really cramming that stuff in because our kids have started like three weeks later. I mean, there's just, I know there's a lot of things, but you know, when you look at the totality of it all, there's a whole lot that, you know. I, I do think we need to look at all the dates, but we also need to look about the learning loss for the high schoolers because we're also gonna have to kind of cram more in if we take more off. So I've got to figure out where, where are you gonna take other days from to kind of compensate for those days?
Yeah.
And that's what makes it so complex.
Yeah, I know.
I have a slew of questions. My first is, so we already recognize some non-secular holidays or not federal mandated holidays. How did those get added to the calendar? When, why, what was that process?
Our institutional historian, Don Fatori, is gonna take the question.
My kids started here back in the dark ages. We didn't have, we didn't actually have. We actually did not have Good Friday. We didn't have, we had a regular, secular calendar. We didn't have Good Friday or, I mean, obviously Christmas because that's when the winter break started. Um, and there, don't know the exact history, I was a parent at Chickory, but they almost had a sick out um, on a Good Friday. And the superintendent had to call a snow day. Yeah. Because there wasn't enough staff. And that, that sort of in the, the next year's calendar had the Jewish holidays and Good Friday.
That leads me to my next statement. So I started like grappling, I mean, this is not easy and it's hard to figure out. It's challenging to figure out what to include, what not to include. Everybody loses. Which brought me to learning about the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment. And I think it really helps to navigate this and draw some lines for what could help us feel like we are making a more fair, equitable decision. I don't know if everybody has read it, I'm happy to read it out loud. But in learning about that, I personally would like to hear from our legal counsel and what their take is on it. I am not a lawyer and I don't know that any of us are in education law. But I think that is our responsibility to look into on the next step.
Yeah, I spoke about her today.
And again, that, that adds another level of complexity because um, you know, Liz and I talked about this and I did a little research on it and, and it's not even clear.
Right.
You know, and, and I don't think tonight is the night to necessarily get into the nitty-gritty of it. But again, that's something we need to learn about and think about our values in terms of that. And I think that's a really, you know, Congress shall not make any laws to establish religion for the United States. Well, Angie is over there smiling and she and I can go on and on about this. And Martha's not here, but it's complicated. But you're right, it does in some sense give us some framework, you know?
Yeah, I just think when, I mean, when you start talking about Congress, for me, that's like, oh my God, I don't really know. But when I read how it applies to public schools and holidays, I think it gives us some things to talk about, like it sounds like was sort of part of the process before, which is school couldn't open, there was an undue burden. If we roll it back, are we setting ourselves up for snow days? If, and how do we decide, is that true for these other holidays? I don't know if it's even true in our district currently for, let's say, the Jewish holidays. So I feel like some exploration needs to be done in terms of next steps on that path.
Since I was on the task force, I just wanted to see if you guys want to hear my journey going through this. So um, when I started volunteering for task force, for calendar task force, then I, on that day last year, we heard about, in the community comment, we heard students standing up asking for um, their holidays, for specific holidays to be off. Um, my first reaction was like, why not? It's great to see more holidays, to include more cultures and religions in our calendar, learn about it and be more inclusive. So I started the task force. In September, we started our conversation. And um, at first, when I started thinking about it, the logistic issues came to my mind. Like Pine Hill doesn't have air conditioning, even maybe two additional days, it's not fair to those kids. And staff, childcare issue, um, all sorts of logistic issues that we can always find a solution. So I kind of moved on. And then um, we went through the first um, survey. And I learned about all the different religions in our community, how diverse our community is becoming. And um, all the cultures, not only religions, but also cultures in our community and how many different holidays there, there are. And then my question was like, okay, how you're picking? How you're prioritizing, where you're drawing the line? If we go to slide thirty-two.
That crazy graph.
I think.
Is it one with the?
So, I mean, demographic, it's very, um, it changes all the time. It's not something that, um, like we can look at this today and then the upcoming year might be totally different. Because like two families move out of the district and then five families join the district and the whole demographics will change. And then if, where we draw the line, like the numbers are very close. The, it, it's just very hard for me to think how we are prioritizing, where we are drawing the line. Is it right to draw a line? And then are we monitoring it? And then in three years, you say, oh, this population dropped the line, should be removed the holiday and add the other holiday because that population increased. So these all came to my mind. And then all of these, also, I was thinking, imagine a child looking at the school calendar and see many or few holidays on the calendar being observed in the district and their holiday is not there. When that child look at that calendar, the whole process of DEI that we are trying to implement will, will be questioned in her, in their mind. But, so that's what came to my mind. And I don't know the right answer. And I know that um, going to federal holidays, it's not, federal holidays are not secular. So it still would not be completely equitable, right? So that's reality. And then the most equitable option would be, um, I mean, the closest as we can get to being equitable is federal holiday. But I absolutely understand the um, other issues with keeping, going back to the federal holiday.
And Goldie, that's, those are excellent points. And it really points out the horrible complexity of the issue. I remember talking to Beth and Beth saying, well, I could convince myself of any of these. And frankly, as a lawyer, I could argue any of them. I, there is one thing though that I do want to point out as a data point. And, and I'm, and I'm trying not to make any arguments here because I think we should be exploring next steps instead of arguing what we want. But I, I, I hearken back to the equity audit, which said seventy percent of our, um, you know, of the constituents, and that was a statistically well-done, you know, want us to move forward boldly with equity, um, diversity and inclusion. But, but Goldie, exactly what you just said, what is inclusion? And we're all informed with, with our own life experiences. And when I grew up, it was really difficult taking off Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur and being, you know, one of like three kids in the school who did that and, you know. I, I just, I think, Dennis, I'm sorry, I don't need to hijack things as I usually do. Um, but maybe, do we want to sort of talk about process?
Yeah, I was gonna ask if there's any more sort of new information or questions that folks wanted to get here and then maybe throwing out some ideas on next steps. I, I saw Jesse first and then.
I don't know if, if I'm gonna get you to where you want to go with that. But I do want, I want to make one point, one kind of story that may help with reference. So I just worked on something very similarly for a state, considering what languages to include for all state-based applications. Like anybody that's enrolling in any state-based service. And it came through a diversity, equity, inclusion lens, are very conscious of that. And we ultimately had to come down through a series of questions of what is, what's our threshold for acceptance? You know, at what point do we want to just say, this isn't going to impact the majority of our people? So we, at this point in time, it doesn't make sense to include. And then after that, what can we do for the additional populations who were not going to include the language? What can we do to make the process easier for them? So for example, the vast majority of the state speaks three languages. After that point, there's only a very small subsection of people that speak those languages. So we decided as a state not to include any additional languages, the free majority of the languages, and then to consider other sorts of supports and services to help the people that do, um, speak other languages, to get them the services and supports across the state that they need. So that was just one, I guess, approach that we sought because, again, you're never gonna, you're never gonna please anyone. But it created a benchmark and a metric and sort of a threshold that felt right for the state. So if we can somehow create parameters around scaffolding around that as a concept, that might help us so we're not swirling.
I have, um, I, I, I mean, I totally understand what you're saying, but that's the practical thing. It's very different than a thirteen-year-old healing left, left out.
Sure. But we're always gonna be there, right? Like.
I mean, we can try to get it to back to.
Yep. So I think, is, I saw a couple other hands, is there additional information we want to add in?
I just, I was really struck when I looked at the survey.
I just, I was really struck when I looked at the survey that there were many people who were saying, well, we just teach our kids to advocate for their holidays and they take the time they need and the faculty is supportive and it's all good. And then you have the students, 60% of them saying they need or they want these holidays. And I'm sure there's some element of that that just likes days off and or needs days off in a very high-pressured environment. But I also know, as a teacher who spends her day in high school, kids feel a lot of pressure not to take their holidays off. And even if they are sort of pressured by their families to take those holidays off, it's really hard to relax and enjoy them because they're behind. So I think that speaks to a larger, maybe cultural issue in our community and not just our community. But I think that puts a lot of pressure on students if we decide to honor fewer holidays in the way that you remember, Judy, from growing up.
Thank you. Christine, did you?
Nope.
Nope.
Goldie. Yeah, I actually, sort of, that, going along those lines, I noticed that the students had indicated stress and tension when making that decision about whether to go to school or observe their holiday. And over 50% subverted their religious and cultural traditions so that they could go to school. I think this, that, you know, reflects our community where we prioritize academics. I wonder if we can be creative about synchronized and asynchronous teaching, again, remote, possibly taking remote days where students could take a synchronized day or asynchronous day. I know my friend, I have friends teaching in Maryland and they're doing this for school day, uh, snow days. So they're doing synchronous teaching. But it might be an option to where, not, it's not like, oh, I'm one of the three kids not there and that's fine according to the school, but I'm still feeling like I'm missing out, I'm missing important things happening. Maybe there's an assembly, maybe there's, you know, all kinds of things happen in a school day that kids miss. So I just wonder if we can be creative in terms of, I don't know state, what, you know, in terms of what the state considers an academic day, but in consideration of the hours and attendance and just maybe giving students options on those days.
Yeah. I just think that made me wonder, I grouped that with the Establishment Clause. I don't know, I think it's great if we can be guided by our values, but I think the state said a remote day doesn't count as a school day a couple of years ago. So that's like, that's a restriction, right? And the Establishment Clause also sounds like a restriction, which is not like a bad thing, it's just helping us define what we can work with. And so.
Look, this is more of a next step question, but as a school committee, what is our deadline when we have to vote this council?
So ideally, you'd make a decision by the end of February because otherwise, I think you'll hear, start to hear from families who are trying to put childcare and vacations on the schedule next year. That's just the reality, we get those phone calls at central office. And I also want to remind you, your three committees, ideally, you're going to vote the same because otherwise you're going to have the bus issue and families with kids on different schedules. So that's another layer of complexity. So if you're going to make a decision for next year to put in place, you'd have to decide by the end of February.
I gotta say, I hear you, Beth, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I think that these are far weightier and more complex issues than whether somebody can schedule their summer vacation for a year and a half from now. And I don't, I don't say that, I don't mean to sound flippant. But these are issues that affect kids profoundly. And I appreciate that, but I think that can't we give ourselves a little more time than that? I mean, can't we decide?
Oh, sure, you can decide when to decide. I'm just telling you that the kind of the rule of thumb has been January for Dover Sherburne, so it would be an exception to what we're used to. And many districts decided December. It's up to you to decide, I'm just.
Anything new?
I just have some questions for the next steps, like if we could get the information on it to help with the decisions.
Yeah, so let's talk about what maybe the next steps are and what information might feed into that.
Can I just ask one thing that will inform that? So if we need consensus among all three, or don't need, but practical matters we do, does it make sense that we do this jointly instead of trying to come to consensus within our own committees and then coming back and then, if we come up with three different solutions, then also trying to come back together? I don't know what makes more sense from a practical, legal, et cetera. Like, I just think if we come back, I envision at least two of us coming up with different pathways.
So I guess, point hurt, there's a practical reality of three moving in a general similar direction. Did the, did the task force kind of have a suggestion on how we formulate a next step in terms of, is there more information that we need? Is this just too hard of a decision for us to conquer as a committee and for as a task force? And we need the whole, is there a, if we need to learn more or gather more information, is there a proposed approach or otherwise, so that we can kind of think about how do we conquer next steps?
Yeah, so you can, these are just suggestions and you're welcome to take them or leave them. I think one of our students raised a good point, was we asked, what's your top, top choice and what's your second? And some people wrote about it in their comments, saying, I could do this one or this one. Here's my rationale. Or if I don't get this one, I'd like this one. But giving people, kind of getting more information about specifically tell us your first and second choice would be helpful. The problem is, you're never gonna get every family to respond. You can stand on your head, you can put flyers in mailboxes, not everyone's gonna respond. So when we look at this data, it's just a reminder, we may or may not have 11.6% of a Jewish population. If you look at the data from the Pew Center, the greater Boston area has 4%. Do I think that Dover Sherburne has more than 4%? Yes. Do I think they have 12%? I'm not sure. And it's only because we have 499 respondents. And like any survey, people who are passionate about this topic are going to do the survey. So I don't know how to ever get clear, perfect data, but I do think that asking families that would be important.
So the secondary.
The secondary. I think getting people to talk to each other is really important and I don't know exactly what that looks like. For example, you know, I mentioned that from when we started the process in May till now, 69% of the committee changed their mind just based on reading comments, looking at data, talking to each other, hearing other perspectives. And when you sit and do a survey as a student or as a parent or a teacher behind a computer, you're thinking about your values and your family. And then to read the comments, like you all read, and to hear another perspective, you know, that is something that I think we learned last year. It was like, here's the line in the sand, you're either this side or any of this side and let's just throw rocks at each other. So how do we start to engage the bigger community in these conversations? Like, listen, this wasn't easy and good for us for taking it on. But how do we get people to understand the other side? So it's not just, this is what I need from my family, forget the rest of you. So I don't know if that's, you know, kind of a, you know, invite people to open comment again, if we have some sort of moderated conversation. But I know, any of the three that are chosen, there's going to be people who are upset and frustrated and hurt. And I think at least giving them an opportunity to understand why and how these decisions were made, but also understanding the perspectives of the other two will be important.
Question on that. Are there lessons learned, either of things to do or not to do from the start time flip? I know that was super controversial and very painful, I would imagine, whether that, like, do you feel like you've got good community engagement and we should replicate some of that? Or did you not and we should do things differently? I don't think we need to litigate all of that right now, but those are some of the questions I would be interested in understanding when we.
I'll just add, because I was really close to that, is that I think we gave everyone a year advance notice. And along with that plan, if you guys remember, once that recommendation was made, there was a lot of work that we did. That next year, we had those task force where we were going to make sure we had every issue that was identified covered. And we worked really hard to do that. And I think that's why it was successful. It was the advance notice and the fact that we knew we had issues to tackle. And we went about it and we worked our butts off and had a solution for everything that was identified. Some things stuck and stayed, like where people worried about that hour between two and three. So we did the ABC club, after the bell club. It will have never got, you know, we thought it was something we needed, it never got traction. So we didn't have to do that anymore. We worked really hard on the buzzer. So I think it was the advance notice, well, obviously, hybrid helped us too because everyone was really super excited to come back to school. But we, we put the thought into trying to address sort of the negative pieces of that to show that we could make it work.
I feel like we should take that same approach for something like this, right? Maybe it feels less impactful because we're talking about three days, but to the staff, to the families, you know, depending on when your school's at year ends, like, it is pretty, it's a pretty impactful decision.
My concern is, we already have two surveys. Are we gonna, are we talking about another survey from community?
Possibly.
But asking what, the same question, like, the three options?
Instead of solutioning, I'd like to solutioning the overall outcome, I'd like to solution what is the next step. Right, these are all fantastic questions that need to be discussed, but we need to get practically out of here at some point that doesn't involve midnight and have some tangible actions for us to kind of take away as homework, so.
Could we, along those lines, could we maintain the status quo for the next year?
Of course.
And create some next steps over the course of the next year so that we could adequately communicate and prepare?
I don't believe that we even need to comment at all on next year yet. I think we still practically do have some runway. How much, maybe we could debate, but I think that at a minimum, in the second half of what you mentioned around, let's get some tangible actions, potentially, everybody take the slew of information, the materials that they, the task force was presented with and marinate and digest it would be one action. And then I think, Judy, you had suggested some type of a workshop. I don't want to throw workshop out because that can be a big term. And this is something that I think is a very, very, very easy way to devolve into deliberation and discussion when it's got to be more of a information sharing. That might be a suggestion.
There, amongst the group, there's probably questions. And maybe just having like a Google Doc, as anonymous as it could be possible, you know, just once we've all had time to sit with this information, to really think about it, to look for holes in the data that we've collected. The task force could maybe go back and see what, what we might not have shared with you or what we could easily extrapolate to provide more information. And then I thought that Jeff's point about, I don't know the legalities of this, but having another meeting where we're all coming together would be helpful, too. And that, I, I don't know if it's a workshop or not, but I think it would be very helpful to get some feedback from you, even if it's anecdotally, about the superintendent, superintendents in the districts that have gone only the mandated, have added the three and are doing what we are doing.
I was, I'd like to know more about the Establishment Clause as well, in terms of like workshop, like a workshop with a lawyer might be.
Yeah, I actually think a workshop would, would be a really good idea because I think there's more information that we could get. And in particular, information about ways in which other communities have structured, either adding or subtracting. You know, it'd be good to talk to someone from a district who has added three holidays and somebody from Concord-Harlisle who subtracted, okay? And so in that sense, I think a workshop is good and getting out there, what else do we need to know? Because it's so complex, okay? And I think Dawn's point is very well-taken as well. But that's for after we make a decision, if we decide to make a change.
Who kind of led the task force? Assuming you or did somebody?
Andrew Keo, the former superintendent.
This task?
Me, this one.
This one?
Yeah.
All right. Here's maybe what I would suggest. Can somebody on the task force, maybe you get the totality of the information that the task force compiled out and available to the school committee? I'd ask, I think it's important that somebody on the task force helps this. I'm happy to lean in just from a chair perspective to coordinate an agenda or a proposed, proposed sort of working session, potentially with external speakers. There's been a couple that have thrown around that I'm kind of loosely aware of. I don't necessarily want the full breadth and weight of this to fall on your shoulders, you've got plenty to do. So if somebody that was on the task force, just having spent some time with this, I think it would benefit, we'd all benefit from having the express train on some of that to help figure out what is it that we actually need in this workshop? Does that feel like a fair next step? And I would also probably go as far as saying, let's get this information. Maybe we can park the calendar discussion to, I don't know, when is our next joint?
That's the problem, we're not meeting again till April.
So maybe we could do a little offline coordination and figure out, do we just approve for this year a status quo calendar, acknowledging that there is further work that needs to be done? We don't need to make that decision tonight, I don't think. And then I think that can be voted on in the individual committee meetings.
And we can also add a meeting in March if we decide.
Yeah, if we have a workshop and we decide, you know what, let's, let's get an extra joint meeting together.
But I'd be happy to work on that, but only if Goldie and or Christine do it too.
Sure.
100%.
Yeah.
Okay. Because I don't want to be in charge, but you can come to my house for lunch.
I'll come to your house for lunch.
We can do it, we can coordinate it together.
Yes.
And I do think we shouldn't rush because like Judy's, I was, my first meeting as a chair was the start time flip. And it, it did not go well. And I think it's because even though we tried to put as much information out there, when you're changing something, if one person wasn't aware, that really personally affects them and they, so if we are going to do this, I don't think moving slower is going to hurt us in the fact that we need to educate and we need to get, make sure that everyone understands the stakes involved.
I'm not suggesting speed. I want to move forward with a purpose rather than forward with a sort of unguided direction, right? And I also don't want to just drag our feet.
No, I don't either. But I'm just saying, like, if we have a status quo for now, just so that we can do a workshop and it, I don't think it's the worst of all things. It's because we just need to make sure.
I mean, workshop is not going to get scheduled next week, right? We've got, we've got to figure out who even makes sense to bring if we do want to and get schedules aligned and all that stuff. So I'm happy to work with the three of you, thank you for.
Yeah, but I think, as you mentioned, it's very important for all the school committee members to read through all the information and data that we collected throughout this task force. Because we have a lot of data, we have two surveys, we had a lot of discussions. I don't think our meetings were recorded, but, you know. But the slide that Beth has is very informative. So I think if we all look through those and then get together and have questions and discussions, we might not even, I don't know, we might even.
And just, just remember, in a workshop or setting like that, it is not considered an open meeting. So there is a strong aversion to any deliberation whatsoever. If we do need to deliberate, we can call an open meeting and schedule it and do the, just like this.
If there is data questions that weren't out there that we have, when and where do we ask that?
Do you want to send them to Christine and Judy and Goldie and I'll work with them?
Perfect.
To find the data that we do have and make sure that it's shared with you. I mean, we have folders and folders and folders, we could keep you busy for the next three months, but there probably are some things we didn't think of that we might want to explore. And I'm happy to help this committee connect with other districts and superintendents and school committees that have made these changes.
Just quickly, on the, on the start time change, I know each of the individual school committees need to come up with the same answer, but was there unanimous approval of each of the committees? And in this case, does this need to be unanimous or just a majority?
I tell you, most, a lot of years, it's not.
Okay, that's what I was also, we oftentimes come with the invited front, but this might be one where it might be a little.
I do think, though, if we do a workshop, one of the agenda points should be just doubling down on what you said. Like, this is not going to be universally popular because on the data, there is no consensus. So we need to come up with a framework that guides our decisions, that we can disagree and commit and then say, this is the framework that we used. And then that drives equity, even if the 13-year-old child is unhappy, there's going to be a 13-year-old child.
And I would just add that it's based in law and not just feeling.
So that's the difficulty, as I spoke with our educational attorney today. And an undue burden or a threshold of low attendance does not exist.
Yeah, I don't.
Can we define that as a district?
So we have to define that.
Right.
And then that's our standard.
I don't buy, there's no. I don't buy, there's no case law that I have seen that says that the establishment clause prohibits us from making, giving kids religious holidays off, okay?
I just think we should get into all of that though.
Right, but what I'm saying, I'm just, you know, I don't, I don't think. I think that that's a point that we need to talk, we need to learn about. And it would be good to learn about it at the workshop.
Okay.
Okay, because I'm, I'm trying not, I'm trying to talk about process and not content. Okay?
All right, let's, let's move on. I think we have next steps. We'll meet and get back out to folks. Coming back to goals.
No, since I'm missing bedtime, it's perfect. So we complete, and we have the executive summary in the packet. So we completed a program review at the, or the recommendation of Deb Levine and Dorsey yearly's review last year of the special education department. At the time of the review, they really outlined our need to look at how we are supporting our high-need students, students with autism, developmental delays and intellectual disabilities through the goals program that exists as well as through the district. So we partnered with Ann Donovan through the Accept Collaborative. And again, her role was to look at what exists, look at the past five years of student records and supports and how we have been supporting students, high-need students. And she visited the middle school and the elementary school that has the goals program as well as collected data from Chikering to with the preschool program and just looking at kind of the wide array of students with high needs that we need to support. And the, the main hope was what programming do we need and what does the criteria for that programming look like? Some of the feedback that was prior to the review and from the review was that we have the goals program and goal stands for generalization of academic language and social skills. So it started five years ago as a program for students mainly with autism. It was really focused and it's really broadened in the time over the five years. And I think that that was some of the feedback from the review from Deb and Dorsey that it's confusing now. So we don't know really what the entry criteria and the exit criteria is. So Ann Donovan gave us criteria, really helpful, really a very specific makeup of needs that students could have. And the criteria was mainly students who require highly individualized instruction with alternative curriculum due to unique learning and behavioral needs. It's much longer than that. It's three whole pages in the report, but that's really drilling down to what makes this this high-needs population need something more programmatic. So the surprising part of the review was that when using this criteria across the two elementary schools, the population that fits this criteria, a majority are Dover residents, which has not been the population. Obviously at Pine Hill right now, we have two Dover residents tuitioned in attending Pine Hill's goals program. So taking this new criteria, helping us to refine for our high-needs population, really shifted things for us. So as a result, the goals program will be no longer at Pine Hill. It's going to now be, there's a high-needs program that we're now calling Connections and it will be at Chikering. And it's a district-wide program. Now, so students at Pine Hill that would need this would go to Chikering, similarly to the makeup that's been happening. And so this is, that's a lot for the elementary, like it really was a focus because there's a program that existed at the region because that's the other piece is if you create a program, you really need to plan through. A lot of the work to be done at the region is to look at the same criteria she provided and look at our population. And we have a small population right now that she refers to as the cohort in the report. And she really wanted us to be looking at space and meaningful inclusion and taking that criteria and really spanning it out through the remaining time in Dover Sherborne. So the next steps really for this, we've been talking to, we spoke with both special education departments, special education departments at both Pine Hill and Chikering. And we are having conversations with families that have been part of the goals program. The staffing needs will be shifting from Sherborne to Dover. So as you see your kind of future versions of your budgets, that will be reflected. And just know, this is a big transition for the, it's very student-centered. And I do think that Pine Hill will really feel a loss. They've really, they, in these conversations, it's been really students at the center. And of course, that makes the most sense. You wouldn't want to displace more students than need to be going to their home district. But it definitely will feel like a loss for Pine Hill and Chikering. Again, we will be working with both schools to really think about the best transition for this. But that was not necessarily what we expected from this review, but it really does make sense when we look at our population and the needs of our students, not just now, but in the coming years. She also had looked at kind of projected trends for the next three to five years. Yes.
So this new criteria, how does it change the students who are part of this cohort? Does it add students? Is it broader? Does it subtract students or does it just change students? There's some combination that I can't think of.
So it subtracts. So right now, across the program, I think there in this current moment are 13 students with some, so it's spanning K to five. This would have, I think, seven K to two next year.
And then what's going to happen to those six kids who are, who are now told you don't meet the criteria?
Yep, so we, the work there will be the positive of having a less restrictive program as far as the criteria. So we have learning center staff that we will, that will support those students and we will be included in more inclusive opportunities rather than a substantially separate at times program. So it will be transition. It's not really, it's going to, their services and supports are going to be intact. Like there's nothing that we're going to say, oh, you're not in this program anymore. You don't get this service. So their services and supports will be there. It just won't need to be in that level of programming. Does that make, and we'll be having those conversations with teams and families as well. It's really.
So these students then will be more sort of mainstreamed or am I not getting this?
The students that are currently in goals, do you mean?
Yeah, the ones that are in goals who are going to transition out of that. Will they then go to a more mainstream environment?
Their services and their supports will most likely stay in a similar fashion. There just won't be one liaison for the goals program and it'll be more, it'll be less restrictive. So there'll be more opportunities for inclusion.
What does less restrictive mean?
So they'll be out of the classroom more, less, sorry, out of the classroom.
They'll be in the regular class. I understand it now. Thank you.
And the reason it's going to Chikering is simply because there's a larger cohort over there. So it operationally just made sense to be there.
Exactly.
You envisioning that if that were to change in five years, that you'd find a place in Pine Hill to talk this or does it?
I did get that question from the special department. I would say we follow the trends of students. And so I, we take this shift very seriously because it's displacing students who are ingrained in the community. So I, I think at this point, looking, all we really can look at is students, grades, ages three and up. But it really did from her analysis seem like it is not going to shift again. But any needs of students, we make the most appropriate.
And there is space in Chikering to handle this?
We're working on that, what the specific space would be. We're working closely with Deb and Jim on that. So I believe yes, exactly what the space is going to be with sections and things like that. We're not exactly sure what the room is going to be yet, but yes.
That was actually going to be my question of a brown space. So like, understand that if a larger percentage of the population is coming from Dover, at this point, we're talking, you said, six or seven kids will be locked in the program. So it's maybe not that much space. But if it's already working well and Pine Hill has a dedicated space, does it, does it make sense to move it? If we're trying to find space in Chikering?
We don't have the space at Pine Hill either, really.
Space is a problem. And just the, like the cost for transportation. And so I think there are lots of different aspects to it. I think there, I think we're confident in the space issue at Chikering.
And this doesn't change the out-of-district profile in any way?
It doesn't. I think if, it doesn't, no. It just flips who's out of district, right? So Chikering students who are at Pine Hill right now become in district versus out of district. And the Sherborne students who are going to be going into Chikering at the program will become out of district in your budget.
And the kids that are now out of that program?
Stay.
Will stay?
In district.
And they'll be added to normal classrooms, to the traditional classrooms as part of classroom size counts?
Yes, they already had been. So they were already included. They'll just be, the goals program was not, like they weren't in the classroom like all day long. They were already in classes. So they won't change the class size or anything like that.
It's still like a home base.
Yeah. It's just like a space, like a room they could use throughout the day that was dedicated to them, but they were always included in a classroom.
That's an interesting point. So I was thinking they were in their own, their own space. So the people who are no longer going to be part of that, if they've been at Pine Hills for four years, now they're going to go to fifth grade to Chikering?
The ones at that grade.
They'll transition. They'll stay at Pine Hill.
Right.
Okay, good.
Can I ask a question about the opportunities for improvement that were also included? Let's see, in the fifth section, curriculum and instruction, concerns were raised about the impact of adopted core curricula on special education. There's been some news about our reading curriculum and whether or not it's serving our, in particular dyslexic students. I've had a question from a family that asked, that raised this concern. So wondering if that's sort of what that is.
Yes, and the, the report actually recommends specific alternative curriculums to any of the ones that we're using for students who are well below grade level that can't access any of the curriculum. So that's one of the pieces is that with our, with our diverse population and growing kind of need for modified curriculum, what she was seeing through the review is that a lot of great things were happening. It just wasn't K through 12. That's kind of that piece is that we need evidence-based kind of throughout and for the core academic areas.
Okay, so there will be things added that we don't currently have.
Do we have the staffing, the resources, the capability to respond adequately to all the improvement areas?
Yes, without any reductions, yes.
Without any reductions. So you're going to, the idea is level staffing. We're just shifting the complexion between the two towns. And we still think we have detailed plans on every single one of these on how we're going to shift, adjust or modify the program to meet these goals?
Yes, so the, the main two, so there have been two teachers in the goals program at Pine Hill. One teacher has been working with the lower goals population, so they will actually be going to Chikering. And the upper goals teacher will be turned, like shifting into a learning center teacher to be part of the group that supports all the learners, if that makes sense.
Questions? Thank you. Appreciate the update. From the policy committee.
That would be me. So I have a policy committee and we're meeting, but we have, we have some things to go through. So this is one of the first ones that, there's been discussion in the past about, we have Metco families and there's no real Metco representation here. So we already have student advisory committee members that, and you know, they come and sit in. They aren't voting members. So we thought the same thing could be true for the Metco. Other districts do this. The only unique thing is we are three different committees with one district. So we kind of had to modify what we have seen from other areas. So in your packet, you'll see that the policy was written and it follows along with what other districts have done. But we just made it so that it represents all of our committees, the Dover, the Sherborne and the regional. And so what it states is that these three committees, here and after referred to just as these school committees because it was too long to write every time, proposes to add in additions to its regular members and its student advisory member, one non-voting representative or two co-representatives, here and after referred to as the Metco representative, who shall represent families participating in the Dover Sherborne Metco program. The Metco representative or co-representatives will be authorized to sit in all open sessions of the school committees and to discuss matters of concern in a fashion similar to school committee members. In addition, the Metco representative or co-representatives may be assigned other responsibilities, including committee assignments as determined by the chair of the representative school committee. And the Metco representatives or co-representatives shall be chosen annually by the Boston Dover Sherborne Metco parent organization and appointed by the school committees for a one-year term. The selection process shall be determined by the Boston Dover Sherborne Metco parent organization in keeping with its bylaws. And the Metco representative or co-representatives will be eligible for renomination and reappointment to subsequent terms. And if a vacancy occurs, the officers may nominate a person for appointment to complete the unexpired term. So it's kind of the same as your student representative person. We just feel like, you know, this is, I guess, our first read on it.
It wasn't listed as a first read, so I wonder if, whether we come together as a joint committee again to talk about the calendar or we do a first read at three individual meetings, then we could do a first read and then a second read at whatever meetings come up next.
So if you have any questions, you can contact any of us who are on, it should be in your packet, who is your representative to be on the policy committee, chairing that part of the committee. And I'm actually meeting with representative from MASC on Thursday afternoon, just to kind of see where we are. I met with the lead nurse on last Thursday to go through what is outdated in our policy manual. So there are lots of chunks that we need reviews by, but I want to get with the MASC to see too what they have to make sure that we're all in line. So it's going to be a year of reviewing policy. So just get right, it should be pretty straightforward, but we just want to make sure we're in compliance with everything.
We're in a three-year, because I actually just got the second year bill.
Right.
Of MASC helping do the whole.
The whole thing, yeah. And unfortunately, the person we were working with retired. So I have a new person. Her name's Alicia. She's really good. But I want to finish it up sooner rather than later. So I've gotten some parts. So we'll start distributing that to our subcommittee people and we'll get together and then we'll bring it to you all. So hopefully we can have a lot done throughout this next year.
You specify open sessions, meetings like this, they would not join executive session or workshops?
No, right, yeah. I mean, I suppose they could join workshops if, yeah, they're kind of workshops. But you know, I don't think any closed session, it's the same with the student advisory position. And because it's a non-voting member.
Just on that, I might have missed as you were saying, is it a person that would go to the Dover school committee? The Sherborne school committee and the joint, we'd have three separate.
So it's actually three different people. So because like not, let's say, they, like the person at Pine Hill may not have a person in the high school yet or the middle school. So we're going to do it as three people or you can do co-representatives just because Boston is, you know, a drive from here and working. Just because Boston is, you know, a drive from here and working parents and schedules. So, um, there, there is a case in other districts where they do it as co-representatives. So that someone is there, but it's not the one person having to come because it is far. That's right, go ahead, Kate.
Um, well, first I just want to say I'm so happy that we're talking about this because we've been talking about this for years. So this is fantastic. Um, also wondering, I mean, I know it's probably preferable to be a person, but if needed, could the representative join us remotely?
I was thinking that too.
I would think so. Wouldn't you think so? I would totally, yeah, because there's no, I didn't see any requirements, you know, elsewhere that it has to be a physical. And, and especially too, because it's non-voting. I think that the spirit of it is to make sure that their concerns are heard and things that we don't understand are concerns because we don't have a child who's coming from a distance into here. And, and we're missing, we're missing a, a chunk of maybe what we need. And so I think any way they could join us would be acceptable, I mean, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
Did we think that the Metco liaison that's on each of the committees, subcommittees, um, is not giving us the insight that we needed, that we wanted to bring this to this level? Or is it?
I mean, I, go ahead.
Can I jump, I mean, this is my opinion. I think it's more, you know, having the Boston families feel that they have a seat at the table. And, and years ago, we were trying hard to, to see if we could have actual voting members because the students are our actual students. And it's the town laws that prohibit that. You have to have an address in Dover or Sherburne. So even if we wanted to have full voting rights, we can't offer that. So I think it's really more of hearing from those Boston families is, is a lot more powerful than having it filtered through us, even though I do hope we're doing a good job of that.
I'd just like to add, I went to the research, the Metco research reveal, um, in Boston. And I, I'm one of the liaisons and I can tell you, I learned so much. There's no way I could have had those insights as a liaison. Um, it only comes from the people who are participating in the program.
I'll also add that, um, we have a Metco parent as one of the three parents on the school advisory committee for Chicaring this year. And it has made a world of difference to get the firsthand perspective from the parent. It's been incredible, um, just so, so, so wonderful. So I, this is awesome. Good, okay, great. So if you all will take this to your respective committees as a first read, I think is the way we should do this. And then we could kind of move it through, if that's okay with you. So we'll make sure, I'll, I'll make sure Diane gets it on their agenda, so I'll send it to her.
It'll be Friday, Friday weekend.
Right, right, so I'll send that to her tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Between the two of us, yes.
That's all.
Okay. Any questions? Action items, anything that we have not discussed that? Uh, consent items, so this is for, uh, vote. The only item on the consent agenda are the joint school committee minutes for the September 12th meeting, which were included on the packet as well. Uh, vote by school committee, so I'll start with Sherburne. Um, quest a motion to approve the joint school committee meeting minutes for September 12th.
Salute Christine Walsh.
Thank you, Christine, second. Uh, discussion? All in favor? unanimous, thank you. Judy?
Uh, can I have a motion to accept the, um, minutes on the consent agenda from September 12th, uh, 2023?
Salute. Oh, jinx.
Second.
Um, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
I abstained because I was absent.
Oh, okay, it's still.
To be technical.
We need to call this out, so whoever's.
They'll, they'll get the video recording, so they'll pick that up, thank you.
All right.
Yeah.
And then.
May I have a motion to approve our joint school committee minutes from September 12th?
If Cassidy salutes.
Give a second, just give a second. Any further discussion, any questions? All in favor? I'm going to abstain too because I was not here, so, thank you.
Great. Uh, informational items, so do you guys want to provide the update on these?
Sure, so there was a memo in your packet from Tech. Um, we belong to two collaboratives, Accept, Enatic, and Tech in Walpole. And some of our students who do not have the ability to service here, go to schools there. Tech is looking for the opportunity to increase their reserve fund, as you saw outlined, from I think $750,000 to 2.5 million, which seems like a big jump. But the 2.5 million is more in line with what other districts have. Um, and the rationale there is, um, as the needs of students change, um, they're currently renting their space. Should that ever be a question and they need to move or buy a location? They want to have money to, um, lean on. So you don't have to approve it, you just have to let me know if you disapprove of it.
What does that actually mean though? Like, we give them more money to have a, a fund or?
Nope, nope, it's just that if they have access, like the region is its own town here. So when they have access, they can put it in the E and D fund. Because they're their own kind of collaborative and town, they have, um, a, a space where they can tuck away money that maybe access. Well, money that comes from us that they aren't spent, you know, whatever, 12 or 13 communities, they can, they can tuck it away. So I will say Accept is a very, um, large and healthy reserve fund for that purpose. Tech does not, so they're looking to increase it and build it over time. Because we don't want to get a bill 10 years from now saying we need to buy this office space and you need to chip in $5 billion. Thank you.
Can I just ask Dawn the question? Does that practically change anything that we're doing for budget?
No, no, we pay dues to both Accepted Tech. Then whatever services we use as members, it's just based students or transportation or Tech does all of our collaborative bidding for us, which is great. So no, it doesn't change our scenario. Um, collaboratives cannot hold on to excess reserves. And so it allows them a, a place like that, that's set to move the money for the future. Otherwise, they have to give that money back to the members. So we're, we're in the equation. So the members are saying, yes, if you have reserves, we'd like for you to put aside money so that you can make these capital investments. Uh, because it's, it's, they don't come and ask us for capital money like we go and ask the towns.
But in theory, if there was excess, it would.
It would come back to us, yes.
It would help our budget.
Um, it would offset our, uh, would offset our dues or whatever. I mean, but it's never tons of money.
Yeah, so.
When you, when you spread it across all the districts.
Right, so Accept right now is, is having this conversation about an excess of, I believe, $100,000. And when you divide that by all of the districts involved, it's, it's very little.
Yeah, it, it's a smart, um, financial move for them to make.
Do you recommend that we do it or are you allowed to do that?
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, I think, these are very, I mean, your board of Tech is all the superintendents of all the districts. So they've, you know, they're bringing us forward to the other districts. Because we're a member, um, they just have to give you the right to say, no, we don't agree with that. They basically agree with it, the board, all the superintendents agree with it. It's just this member discuss, you get the opportunity to say, no, 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 we want the money, we don't want you to have it. But it's rare that you ever see a district go against what the recommendation is.
Terms, questions, moving on? Food nutrition?
Uh, so you have a, um, multiple topic, uh, memo that we put together, um, timely on many fronts. Um, just talking about the continuation of universal free lunch. And with sort of the, um, longevity of that now that's been built into the budget, the state's looking to, uh, implement all aspects of universal free lunch, which includes breakfast. So, um, we are, they're enforcing that in full for fiscal year '25. So Janelle Madden and her team are looking at how, what that's going to look like at the elementaries and here at the region. Uh, technically, the break that we already have at the high school conserve as breakfast. So we're working on how we grab and go in the mornings of the elementaries, staying with the middle school. So she's working on what those menu items look like. Um, but then any, any student who takes that then will get reimbursement, um, just like we are getting for lunch. Um, so it's just expanding the food opportunities, um, for students. Um, the other thing that was in there is, um, because of this high participation, and it's not just, it's all school districts in the state, um, they're all sort of accumulating reserves or more than they can have. And so what we've been told to do is just to make sure we have a plan for the excess. It doesn't have to be spent immediately, but they're encouraging us to reinvest into the food service departments. It's timely for us because we have, um, original, some older equipment. So we are going for, and actually things are, um, going out on us. So, uh, as you know, we've been replacing some of the equipment and both the elementaries had something large this past year. You'll see, um, more of that. Um, at the region, we've been looking to purchase cafeteria tables. We, we asked when we had our DESI review and cafeteria tables because that primary purpose of that space is to serve lunch. We're going to be able to use, uh, food service reserves for that. So a lot of exciting things. Um, we didn't used to have a reserve. In fact, some years we had a negative balance. Whenever you have a negative balance in food service, the general fund has to sort of, um, take on those expenses. So this is like a situation that most food service departments aren't used to. So, um, it's, it's exciting that we have all this money to reinvest back into the, the, um, the three kitchens. Um, and then the third thing in there was just, um, the DESI administrative review that was just completed. Um, it was very cumbersome and a lot of work for our director of food service. She spent a lot of extra weekends here preparing. Uh, but we had our closing meeting and except for a few things that they focused in on, wellness policy, which we already had on our radar, um, more, um, highlighting up to civil rights policy in regards to child nutrition. Uh, we just have to make sure that's on our food service website. Um, a few little things here and there, but for the most part, uh, the reviewer thought that we do a great job and she thought our staff were absolutely phenomenal. Uh, she was greatly impressed. So confused about our three districts, but, um, uh, she gets it. Uh, so she's, she's, she's like, well, you're going to get three reports. Um, they're basically going to say the same thing. I encourage you to cut and paste, cut and paste, cut and paste. We're like, yes, we do that all the time. But it's always reassuring to have someone from the outside come in and validate the good work that we thought the three kitchens were doing. So, um, you know, Janelle is having a little training session with our three managers, I think, next week. And I, I told her, like, you know, treat them with breakfast or lunch or something to show our appreciation, um, for what they do for all of our students. So, um, if you have any questions on any of that, I think I hit all the highlights.
I just, quick, because I know everybody's, um, I'm so thrilled to hear that we're looking at the breakfast program because years ago, a small group of us inquired about that and were told, no. Not like they didn't want to, but that we were just too small and it wasn't going to work and this and that. So that's phenomenal. Um, and also, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the break at the region, if you're on free or reduced lunch, that doesn't count, you have to pay for that, so.
Um, but we, yeah, we offer that, but yes, but now this will be part of.
They'll have breakfast.
This will be part of the program, so, um, certain items will be. So only certain items at break will be part of the free breakfasts. Our students right now that who come to break, we do have mechanisms of their free and reduced lunch. There are certain menu items that they can get. And we don't get reimbursed for that, but we, we've arranged for that. So now the, if someone comes through the line and takes something that is on the breakfast menu, it, they won't get charged for it. But there's a lot of à la carte stuff that they would still get charged for.
Yeah, okay, but, and I'm sorry because I probably said this and I'm just.
All I'm saying is that break will qualify.
Yeah.
For what we need to do, uh, for the breakfast requirement.
Okay, but in addition, you're talking about an actual breakfast program at each school or no?
Yes.
With the breakfast program at the region would happen during the break.
Yeah, for the high school. The other ones though, it probably would be like the 10 or 15 minutes before school starts. It'd be a grab and go.
Yeah.
Uh, it, it's not a sit down.
Yeah.
Go, go into the cafeteria, it's more of a grab and go.
And you can eat it in your classroom.
And we have to work out those details.
Yeah.
But that's. And we're thinking the middle school too will have the same opportunity when they come. Because their lunches, you know, can't build a break and then their lunches start like at 11:00. So, um, when they're coming, filtering in in the morning, they can go and grab something. So we're talking to other schools to see what they're doing. The menu items will be, um, more, uh, non-perishable things.
Yeah.
So, because it's hard right now to think about what your participation rate is going to be. So it'll be a little bit of a work in progress, but.
But that will be available to all students, not just students on free and reduce?
All, it's universal.
Great.
Yes, because, and that's because, so free and reduced technically includes breakfast in the real, in that world.
Yeah.
And now that it's man, you know, we're doing universal across the state and it's been. They're enforcing that piece of the federal program, the state program, um, on all school districts. There's about over 40, almost 45 districts that don't do any breakfast right now. We're one of those. Um, so there's 45 districts that need to, to move on to the breakfast program.
That's great, thank you.
And will this impact precess, will it be part of precess?
Yeah, all that we have to figure out, yeah.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Adding land item in the budget for cleanup school food fights? Chicaring and Pine Hill.
Buy the back dinner and that market, our food service money.
Mr. Dave though.
The district review?
So, um, first of all, thank you to Denny. We have, um, representatives from DESI and an agency that they've contracted with here all week. And Denny has uploaded, gathered documents from every space and corner of these, these three districts, uploaded them, created the schedules. Um, three of you were on a call today, Liz, Mark, and Dennis. Thank you, and I heard you did a fantastic job answering questions.
Me?
All three of you together, you made a great team. Um, so they are here this week, they're looking at three items. They're looking at school governance and leadership, which is you and, uh, the district leadership. They're looking at professional development and human resources. And then they're looking at finance, um, and assets, which of course is, is Dawn's, um, expertise. Uh, so thank you to those of you who participated in interviews, they're visiting classes, they're meeting with parents, they're meeting with teachers, they're meeting with administrators. And they, just similar to all of the other reviews that we undergo, will come back, I'm sure, with, um, things that they say that we're doing well and perhaps some areas for growth. Anything else? You're looking forward to Friday, I'm sure.
My pleasure.
Just a question, is this like a random assessment? Is it a cyclical reassessment, assessment or?
It's an excellent question.
Do something wrong?
No, so we are on a cycle to look every three to five years at, um, special education, civil rights, title grants. There's us, food services, we're on this cycle. And then every once in a while, a new one comes out of left field and you're not sure. But we were chosen to have this new, um, survey done not by DESI, but by a contracted agency. Um, and so here we are.
But it wasn't because of any?
We didn't do anything wrong, like, we were just the lucky ones chosen in the lottery. Um, and I mean, looking at it, it is a lot of work. And it's tying away from other things that Denny and the leaders could be doing. However, it's always nice to, to get accolades for things that we're doing well. And it's always nice to have an outside person say, have you thought about this? So we're trying to look at the bright side.
Yeah, we were chosen last year and eat them.
So it's just totally.
With a small sample size, I'd say is a pretty good thing to be chosen. No, it's not about me, but I'm just saying it's not. You're wrong if you're chosen, is what I want to say.
Causeation, correlation.
Yeah, no, no, no.
Cool, thank you.
I need to look to Tom.
Yeah, look to Tom, yeah.
Was the report worthwhile?
In some ways.
Thank you for that update. Items for April 2nd, so that's our next JSE unless we do something else in the interim here. Um, if you do, feel free to email me and we can kind of figure it out. Any other business?
Just a reminder that that's part one of the superintendent evaluation. Part two is later that month. So we're going to have to, um, I'm going to have to get my evidence and resources together and you're going to have to check what the process looks like.
Another evaluation.
Can't endorse this one, sorry.
We do have a meeting in March though, don't we?
No.
No. No.
There's a Sher, just Sherburne and just Dover.
Okay, sorry, I can't.
Yeah, you guys had one that night too.
You what?
Yeah, March, that's, you guys are 5:30 to 7:00 in the region, that's not too much.
I just want to, uh, say thank you to everybody, this is maybe on the longer side, hearken back to some of the COVID meetings, I'm sure. You too, Stacey, as well. Um, and but big, huge thank you to the task force for presenting all this. It was a ton of hard work. Obviously, we still have some, some road to, uh, to plow ahead. But, and I appreciate everybody for kind of, um, adhering to our norms and keeping this a civil and forward-looking discussion. So thank you for me and for everybody to lean in and then kind of really invest the time over the next couple of weeks to kind of give, give this some thought. With that, um, at nine. With that, um at 9:22, I call for a motion to adjourn. Favor? unanimous, everybody wants to get out of here.